March 2nd, 2017, 7:00 PM. First item on the agenda is prayer and pledge. If you'll please stand and bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and thank you for everything you've given us. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come and serve this community and serve you. Be with those that are sick and hungry. Lift them up to you, Lord. Guide and direct us as we go through this meeting. May we keep the people in our first, fourth thought. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Second item of the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Need to approve.
Second. Got a first and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Third item is citizens' comments.
Mayor, there are no citizens' comments tonight.
Okay. Fourth item is awards and recognition. Okay. We have some guests with us. Do we want to bring them up at this point about the Born Learning Trail?
Yes, Mayor. We have some guests and Ms. Rainey can help with this. We have some guests from the United Way of Williamson County and First Bank for the presentation information regarding the Born Learning Trail. That's initiative that those two partners put together with us for some work to be done in the park. It's a really neat thing. Want to take just a minute to kind of go over a PowerPoint that's been presented to us tonight to discuss that and then just thank them for their participation in an update on how we'll install this activity within the park.
Okay, great. And Mr. Blade, are you here with us? And then Commissioner Rainey, did you have anything to add?
No. Pound Bright, President and CEO of United Way will speak for United Way.
Okay, great.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. First Bank is very proud and excited to partner with United Way of Williamson County and the City of Fairview to sponsor the Born Learning Trail in our beautiful nature park. Education of our youth is a passion shared by both First Bank and our Chairman, Mr. James W. Ayers. In fact, since its inception, the Ayers Foundation Scholars Program has provided over 2,000 scholarships totaling $10.9 million. We realize and respect that today's child is tomorrow's citizen and perhaps leader. We're grateful for this opportunity to give back to the community which we serve. United Way's national engagement campaign, Born Learning, helps parents, caregivers, and communities use everyday moments outdoors to boost school readiness of children in their preschool years. Born Learning's public service advertising, resource-rich website, and educational material offer fun, concrete ideas to help children learn. The quality of children's early learning experiences is critical to the success in school. Perhaps the most visible component of the Born Learning Campaign is the Born Learning Trail. The trail features age-appropriate, simple-to-construct activities that can be set up outdoors or inside. Ten games on engaging signs that are placed along the trail help parents and caregivers create learning opportunities for a young child. Whether it is in a local park, at a childcare center, or a school, in a library, or next to a children's museum, the trail can be a valuable community resource for early learning because it promotes learning in a fun and interactive way, both important components of early childhood learning. The trails help young children boost language, reading, problem-solving, and critical thinking skills. They offer families a place to be active, elevate awareness of early childhood education, and are a visible symbol of the community's commitment to their young children. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
And then if you would like to join us?
Thank you for just the opportunity. Really, all I want to say is just we are very appreciative for the collaboration that took place here with the City of Fairview, with First Bank, and then, of course, the Health Department was also instrumental in getting this up and going. And the slides that you were able to see just gives you an idea of how the trail has the opportunity to look when it's finished. So we encourage all of you to get out there and take advantage to take a walk and enjoy Booty Park. It's beautiful, as you all know, and this just helps to make it even a greater pleasure to go and be a part of. Also, just through the years, we thought this would be a great opportunity just to kind of highlight the partnerships that we've had along the way. We did a community needs assessment in 2008, and through that community needs assessment, again, with the collaboration of the City of Fairview and the Williamson County School Systems, we were instrumental in bringing the Boys and Girls Club here, which has been out here and has moved several times because of growth, to the outer part of Williamson County. And then in addition, in 2014, with a new community needs assessment, one thing that really was highlighted is mental health issues. Actually, it was number three in the community needs assessment, just right below affordable housing and transportation. And again, through the collaboration with the City of Fairview, the Williamson County School System, and Mercy Community Health, we have funded a program that's here in our Fairview schools that provides additional counselors, a full-time counselor to the high school, middle school, and one that's shared with elementary schools. And United Way of Williamson County, our Board of Directors approved funding that program for $500,000 for the first three years to get that program up and running. So again, that all happens because of the collaborative partnerships that we have. And so we appreciate you and are very thankful for that.
Thank you. And we really appreciate you and everything you've done. And I have to give Commissioner Rainey kudos. She has been active for years in our community in making sure that these programs come. And just this program, she actually was the first to tell us about it, probably, I don't know, a year and a half, maybe two years ago. But Kathy Montgomery and she had partnered with the city wanting to bring some initiatives in and, of course, got Commissioner Rainey involved. And we saw the opportunity to make this happen. So very excited. There's a couple other projects we're working on, too, the same committee, and thankful for the work you do. And thank y'all for coming and sharing, and we really appreciate the partnerships.
I feel the need to say that working with this collaboration, I'm wearing my United Way hat and not my City Commissioner hat. So just so we make sure that we clear that one.
Well, and I appreciate, but it's still your title now. I have to give you the commission title. But anyway, the work that she has done over the years, obviously, if you've been around the community, you know how grateful we've had to have Debbie. So anyway, Commissioner Rainey. Okay, we'll move on. Any other words or recognition?
No, ma'am. The installation of the trail will be done along the sidewalk around the playground as it exists now. It has a series of workstations and learning activities, and we felt that the playground would be the best place to incorporate that so people can obviously enjoy their kids, enjoy the playground, and establish the learning stations in such a way where it takes time to go through the process, but it's time-appropriate. So they don't move through it too quickly, but it gives them the opportunity to kind of visit each one individually. So we look forward to having that installed there. It will be on the sidewalk between the nature center up to the playground and then around the playground to get there. So it would be visible from that area, and we certainly look forward to it and thank the partners for making this happen.
Yes. And then I had to mention the library is also involved in this. I don't think I mentioned in the original. So appreciate their work and everything, bringing this committee together. Okay, public announcements? Okay. Staff comments? And I guess we'll start off with Ms. Johnson.
I have nothing.
Okay. Mr. Darty. Okay. Mr. Hall?
I have nothing.
Okay. Let's see, who else we got? Key? Mr. Paisley? You back there?
I'm not.
Okay. Anybody else? Police, fire, do we have? Okay. Think I covered everybody. Item seven, approval of the minutes. And we only have one item on the consent agenda. Any changes? Nope. Can I get a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, got a first and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, old business. There is no old business. Item 10, new business. Discuss and take action on ordinance number 2017-2.
An ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, providing that the Fairview Municipal Code be amended by revising Section 4-208 of Chapter 2, Title 4, in regard to nepotism. Commissioner Burks.
There's been discussion for some time, I know on the previous administration, about implementing a nepotism policy. There's many reasons to have that. One thing I find very important is that we have a policy in the city that applies to every employee of the city, but does not apply to this board up here. And I really believe any ordinance that applies, that it should be from the top down, we shouldn't be left out of this stuff. Not picking on anyone or any particular situation, but going forward, I feel it's just very important.
Okay. Any comments or discussion? Do we want to put a motion on the table?
I would move to adopt the nepotism policy that was previously submitted by Commissioner Crutcher. That's included in the package.
Second. Okay, we have a first and second. Any discussion?
There is one typo, if it matters. Section 6, where it starts at the event, should be in the event, I presume?
Okay. Note that.
Section 6, she lost me.
Employees who become relatives.
Okay, any other questions or discussions?
I did have one question, and that was from Mr. Crutcher, because I know he did previously prepare this. And... I don't see it now. Wasn't important.
Go ahead, Commissioner. Thank you for asking.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple things. One, if you looked at the previous 4-208, the policy that exists now, it's, there's not a lot there. It's kind of bare bones. Sort of, I'm not going to say narrowly defines relative, but it doesn't define relative as broadly as it should be defined in 2017. So that's one of the things that this draft policy did, was it more broadly defined relative. It also, like Commissioner Burks said, it expanded the application to not only employees of the city, but also to BOC members. In that, sitting BOC member, obviously, a relative as defined by this revision wouldn't be eligible for employment with the city. It does, it doesn't apply retroactive to any existing employees with the exception of promotions during the period of time that any relative may sit on the BOC. I mean, certainly, this board doesn't have the authority or jurisdiction to limit who can run for the BOC. In the event that someone does run in the future and that person has a relative that is an employee of the city, it just simply limits what could happen with that employee during the term of office of their relative. So that's one of the things that this provision does. And then, lastly, and I don't think this is in our current ordinance, which is important in my mind, it talks about what would happen in the event this policy becomes applicable. In other words, if we do end up with employees that are in direct supervisory, or an employee that's in a direct supervisory position over another employee, or another relative, rather, what would happen? I don't think that was part of the previous ordinance, and I think that's why this was important to put it in this ordinance. But other than that, I don't know if that brought back any question that you might have had, but that was sort of the thinking that went into this.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. B, discuss and take action on FHS press box funding. Commissioner Crutcher, or Vice Mayor Crutcher.
All right, thank you, Mayor. This is something that was partially appropriated for back sometime last fall, I think, when the schools came for some funding. A portion of the money that was appropriated to the high school was for engineering fees associated with the press box. Unfortunately, we only appropriated $5,000, or allocated $5,000 of that money that we gave to the high school for that purpose. It is now going to be around $10,000 to get the engineering done, to get the architect, the plans drawn for that. So at this point, I'm asking that we appropriate an additional $5,000 to finish at least the design phase of that project. Again, and just in full disclosure, going forward, I can tell you that this project is expected to cost probably between $100 and $150,000, just so that we know what we're looking at coming down the pike. This would be something that I envision or anticipate coming from the school facilities tax. There's certainly money there in that account that would be available to do this project. And I'll tell you my thinking behind this project, just to give you a little background if you weren't here. And I don't remember if it was this board or the previous board that actually appropriated that original money. I want to say it was the previous board.
Previous board, yes, sir.
But nonetheless, if you've been to the football games at the high school, you see the press box that we have now, and that press box is, we've outgrown the press box. There's also the previous press box that was there, you could actually walk behind the press box to get to the other side of the stands. The design now actually blocks off the walkway so that you can get to the other side of the stands, and now you have to actually go down and completely around to get out of the football stadium. And again, I know this is not necessarily a city problem, it may be a county problem, but hear me out. The, I can't think, other than the Fourth of July celebration, I can't think of a place in the City of Fairview where there are more visitors on an annual basis than to that football field. There's five home football games a season that if you've been to those games, you know how many people are there that come to our city and that we're really visible to other parts of Middle Tennessee. Not only does the high school use it, the middle school uses that facility, the Titans organization uses that facility, and the high school audiovisual class or organization, they use that facility. The band uses that facility. So there's, it touches a lot of kids' lives. Not only that, it becomes a very visible part of our community. So it needs some upgrades, and I just wanted to tell you before we appropriated another nickel toward it, kind of what the end game was. Now, it's 5,000 to finish just the design part of this, but there will be a funding request coming to actually build the structure. So that's where we are. So my motion would be to approve an additional $5,000 for the design phase of the press box.
Okay, you have a first and second. Do we have that breakdown of what the money was allotted and how it was supposed to be spent?
I don't have it with me tonight, but we can certainly get you that. We can follow up with that information and make sure that you have it. The question that we may, and I know we discussed this as it relates to this press box issue, is the direct funding of this amount to, I think, the school? Is that right?
That's right.
So that they would actually be the contractor, so to speak, or the, they would do the selection for the engineer. We would simply be funding as a direct funding to the school for that, so.
Yeah, that's right.
And then we'll get you the follow-up on the previously approved budget and where those numbers are, make sure that they fall in line with what you're looking to do.
And I guess, go ahead, Commissioner Burks.
I have to agree with what Mr. Crutcher's saying. We constantly hear there's nothing for families or younger children to do in our town, in our community, and anyone's ever been to one of the games on Friday night knows, you know, half the town's there. It's a huge community event. It's something everyone here gets around, and I think it's a very important addition to our community, and I would like to see it improved because we do make an impression on the visitors that come every week. Mr. Crutcher, do you know if that money is going to also apply to a new sound system there?
I don't know. I spoke to Coach Hughes and Dr. Ori in the past about this, and I know that Coach Hughes was talking about there being some additional funding that may be available for the sound system portion of this that would not be city funds. So I don't know for certain if that's in the plan, but I know they're looking at doing multiple improvements, not only to the press box, but to other areas of the stadium as well, in addition to this.
Additionally, I assume the county's getting ready to prepare their budget going forward for next year. Have we approached the county about maybe matching funds to help pay for this project?
We've not yet. It's something certainly that we can do. I think we could probably do that, maybe by resolution. I know Commissioner Jones was here earlier for a meeting with the City Manager and I, specifically about funding and matching and how that process would work with the county. The thing that I don't want to see happen, and I think when it comes time for them to do their budget and at the beginning of next fiscal year, there very well may be some money. I think Commissioner Jones said that he would prefer that we do it by resolution, say, hey, the City of Fairview, you know, has resolved to allocate X amount of dollars to whatever project it is, and then he could take that resolution then to the county commission and then ask for funding, you know, match, that would match our funding. What I don't want to see happen with this particular project, and the next one on the agenda for that matter, is that it get caught up in the government process and be delayed. This is something that we wanted to get to the high school, you know, Coach Hughes, I was talking to him this week and, or last week, and told him, I said, I realize it's only February, but before you know it, it's going to be August, and the way the government works, particularly with funding and getting things done, we need to get on this right now. So I don't, personally, I don't want to wait to see if the county's going to match funds. I think that's something that could happen and very likely will happen, based on the conversation that we had with Commissioner Jones. But again, I don't want the city to delay waiting on whether or not there's going to be matching funds. I'd prefer that we move forward.
Okay. Next question I have, I'm sorry, I was finishing. What is the status of the inter-county agreement that we have as far as the facilities tax?
I haven't heard from the county. Our board unanimously voted to terminate the agreement, and we'd have to check that with the county. If that, if the county voted, and I know they were involved, what, five or six cities? And if they voted to terminate the agreement, it would streamline what this board could do, primarily with the school funds, the private act that created the adequate school facilities funds, gives the cities more leeway to do projects than it does the county in that it specifically says that the cities are limited to public projects, which to me, for the board to be clear, we'd only have to have a hearing where they have information about what the project is. I think they would need to have, since the statute doesn't specifically put out directions as to what you do, but just to protect yourself in a good business manner, the board would need to have a finding that X project is a public project. For example, you know, like you're talking about the press box, that it's used by large numbers of the public, and we therefore find it's a public project. Then all you'd have to do is appropriate your funds. But we do need to verify with the county if they have it passed their part of that because to terminate the agreement required unanimous vote of the county and the city. And I know the county was, when I talked with the county attorney about it on the initial stages, that he was, they were, they really wanted to get out of it because what was happening is the cities wanted to exercise their right under the public, under the private act that did this thing, but they were being bound by the county. And the county wasn't, I don't think, giving them a hard time, but every time they got ready to do something, they had to go back and get the county's agreement. But that would be simple to verify with the county.
So can we verify that?
Yes.
So we know what our process is?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. To clarify, it has been passed. It was somewhere back in December, should have been the final reading. Also, we, I need to, did we, have we already given the funds yet? Can somebody verify? So we haven't even given the funds to the schools?
Correct.
Okay. So that's something we need to consider doing anyway. So have they just gotten estimates, and that's why they all of a sudden know the 5,000's not enough?
They have, yeah. Coach Hughes, he's been working with an architect, I said engineer earlier, I should have said architect. He's been working with an architect, and the architect's estimate for services was, it was, it was a bit less than $10,000, but just to be safe, I'm asking for an additional five to make sure that we cover those fees.
And have you looked up in the minutes and made sure that it was 5,000? Because I don't remember the breakdown, but I know that we gave a large amount.
I did. I have not gone back and confirmed that, but I recall specifically us having that conversation, and it was, and that the money that was given to Fairview High School, a portion of that was specifically designated as money to be used for this project, and that amount was $5,000. I do recall that. So, and then again, I just did a follow-up. I didn't realize that the schools didn't have their money yet. Well, I may have, because I think we may have had that conversation about whether or not it had passed the county. But nonetheless, I just was kind of trying to figure out where we were a couple of weeks ago on this particular project, and that's when Coach Hughes told me that there was going to be some additional money needed for the architect to complete the design phase. So I immediately put it on the agenda because, again, I realize then we were in February, now we're in March. Before you know it, it's going to be August, and we're going to be playing football. And this is something we would like to see completed before August, obviously.
Mr. Crutcher. If we approve the money tonight, I mean, can we get it done by football season?
I think so. Yeah, I think so. I think, I asked him about the turnaround on the actual plans, and I didn't get a response on that. I think everybody was kind of just waiting to see if the money was going to be, it was going to be funded, and then, you know, then immediately get on the design part of this. You know, I don't know. I think they already have something in mind, at least a concept of what this is going to look like. It's just a matter of actually the architect doing the work that they do to try to get it in final form for the building phase to start. So again, I think this is something that the high school, it's something that they're going, the money's going to come from the city, but they're going to actually handle the design phase, the construction phase, which obviously they need to. So I think, to answer your question, yes, I think they envision this being completed by August.
Yes, go ahead.
If I may interject one thing, just so.
Yes, please.
If we get the information and we pull tomorrow and we find that the county has done, has gotten the approval, and they've passed that, then given the fact that those funds have already passed the city council or the board of commissioners, at that point, once we have that information, we will remit all funds from that account to the school. So it would be, the submissions to the funds after tonight would be everything previously approved, plus the additional 5,000 to the high school if that's the wish of the board tonight. But certainly, if we have that information, we'll move forward with distributing those checks as quickly as we can.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything? Now, I do want to make sure y'all do understand, and I think it's probably in the workshop originally explained, but school facility tax, we can't spend it on anything but basically schools and what's deemed as a public use. So that money is sitting there. So I just wanted to make sure, since we have a still, you know, new board, so.
Mr. Collins, what's the?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I thought you were finished, Mayor. I thought I was.
Oh, no. I'm the chair.
I was going to ask, what's the current balance of the school facilities tax? So everybody knows.
Approximately, as we sit here today, approximately $750,000.
Okay. Okay.
Of which?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, sorry. Of which, to my knowledge, only the $120,000 has been appropriated out of that. Wasn't it 40, I think it was 40,000 to each of the four schools?
Yes, sir, that's correct. We anticipate after these distributions are made, that our fiscal year ending balance would be approximately $600,000 in that account.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Okay, so the motion, if you'll read that back, Ms. Johnson, make sure we're all clear, it's been so long ago.
Vice Mayor Crutcher made a motion to approve the additional 5,000 for the design phase of the press box.
Okay. No more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item C, discuss and take action of funding improvements for Fairview Ballpark. Vice Mayor Crutcher.
Thank you, Mayor. This is another one of those items that's kind of near and dear to my heart, youth athletics. And if anybody has been to our ballpark in the recent past, you would know that there's some things that need to happen there to bring that ballpark, I guess, into 2017. I don't know how else to say it. There's some structural issues that need to be fixed. Again, I realize we're talking about county property, but I also want this board to be cognizant of the fact that our children are the ones that use that facility. And we've got roofs over dugouts that are dilapidating. We had a roofing contractor come out last year to look at repairing those roofs and once the, and in fact, was going to donate his time and materials and labor to do the job. But once he got up on the roofs, he realized that there was much more structural issues than what he originally thought. And it was going to cost substantially more than what he had in his budget in terms of donations for last fiscal year, so our last calendar year, and just simply couldn't do it. So it was going to be put off to this year. There's also, if anybody has been there, there's also scoring tables that sit behind each of the fields. Those scoring tables, if you walk up to them and you shake them, they're elevated. They basically serve as a jungle gym for kids during baseball and softball games. If you walk up to them and shake them, you can almost, you know, you can see how structurally unsound they are. And that's a problem. Just the overall aesthetics of the ballpark, there's some things that need updating. Paint, there's some things that are rusted that need to be painted. There are some storage sheds that were, it appears that we've kind of just ended up with a couple of old storage sheds. We're looking at doing away with those that are dilapidating and putting in a new storage facility that would not only be used for baseball, but would also be used for football. Both baseball, softball, and football, those three programs alone, you're talking about a substantial number of children in our community that go through those programs and use those facilities every year. There are some other items that we need to look at or that the county and the city would need to look at in terms of funding this. This is not a funding request that would be, that would require us to send funds or remit funds to any nonprofit organization. These are funds that the city would hold and the individuals that do the work on these repairs would have to invoice the city. So it sort of takes out the nonprofits from having access to the funds, which is good. Again, we talked to Commissioner Jones, or I guess I need to be more specific, Bubba Jones, earlier about this. He is on the Parks and Rec Committee at the county level. And he feels confident, again, that if we appropriate this money, that there will be matching funds. He didn't want to make that promise that it would happen between now and the end of the fiscal year. But he did feel like that at the beginning of next fiscal year, he would be in a better position to go to the county commission and say, "Look, the city of Fairview has appropriated $25,000 this year." I think in the proposed budget for next year, there may be an additional $25,000 that could be appropriated by the city. He's hoping to be able to take that and ask for $50,000 to match the $50,000 that would be given by the city over the course of the two fiscal years, this year and next year, to get $100,000 worth of improvements to the park. And he feels confident that that can happen. I know he's going to have a conversation with Mayor Anderson on Monday subsequent to that. We want to put this in action and we want to put it in action quickly. The ball season starts the middle of April, so we don't have a significant amount of time to get some of these things done. However, some of the structural safety issues, we would like to get those completed before then. So the amount that I'm asking to be funded tonight is $25,000. And that would take us through the end of this fiscal year. And then we could talk, when it comes to budget time, about some additional funds. But I do think this is something where there's going to be matching funds from the county. So my motion would be that we appropriate $25,000 for improvements to the Fairview Ballpark.
Second. Okay, we've got a first and second. Any discussion? You got some?
Madam Mayor.
Okay.
I'm sorry, it's hard to see over there, so. Mr. Crutcher, how much do you think it'll cost to fix the immediate safety concerns?
I don't know. I know that there's been no, there's been no estimates in turn. The roof part of it, I will tell you that he, he being the roofing contractor that looked at it last year, anticipated somewhere between $5,000 and $6,000 just for the roofs of the dugouts. There's also something that I didn't mention that was off my list earlier. There's also some batting cages where there were some safety concerns. We're wanting, the county has told us that they have new netting for the batting cages, so that's not something that would come out of this $25,000. However, those batting cages are sitting just on the ground. And what happens over time is you get holes that wear out from use in the actual ground and balls will hit and go underneath the netting and other things. What we're hoping to do is be able to come in and put concrete pads and sit those on top of them so that that eliminates that issue altogether. And actually, not only the concrete pads, but also some turf on top of those. There's only two cages in Fairview, so we're wanting to do those two pads. There's also, I've heard estimates on the building of somewhere between, and again, this is a broad range, somewhere between $10,000 and $20,000 on the building. So.
Is that the storage building?
The storage building. So is everything going to be able to get accomplished that probably should get accomplished with $25,000? No, but I think it gives us a good start. It gives us, it also, I think, will open, it's sort of a gesture to the county that we're interested in contributing to Parks and Rec and our youth. And we wanted to start that dialogue several months ago and I don't necessarily think we got off on the right foot in how we approached it. But I think it's something to show, you know, Fairview's serious about this. We're serious about trying to upgrade facilities out here. We're willing to partner with the county in doing this. I think this is a good first step. And it's a step that, to my knowledge, we've not taken in the past. You know, I've heard Mayor Anderson with the county multiple times say, and Gordon Hampton with Parks and Rec say, you know, that the county will certainly entertain the idea of matching funds with the city, 50%, and they've done that in the past with other municipalities. In fact, I think with other municipalities, they have even financed interest-free that particular municipality's one-half of those matching funds. So the county is, you know, they're going to be in a position that we're going to need to partner with them in the future to see some of these type things grow in our area. There's just not enough funds to go around at the county level. And I think the cities are having to get involved and having to supplement some of the funding that goes into Parks and Rec in particular and athletics. You know, again, this is something that I just. I feel like that there's not a lot, you touched on it earlier, there's not a lot in Fairview for our youth to do. One of the things that they do get involved in early on is sports. And this is a way that we can improve that experience for them. I know that that experience for me, growing up, shaped who I was and who I am. And I think it's important and it gives the youth something to do in Fairview. And so that's why I'm proposing it.
Okay.
Commissioner.
Yes.
My only question would be, would it be better to make sure that we have that list of priorities for safety reasons and get those things corrected before a child gets hurt? Would that be a better thing for us to focus on first?
Yeah, and that's a good question, Commissioner. And I think that, I think I can give you the short list now, just knowing what exists. I think the batting cages, those need to be fixed, particularly the slabs that need to be poured for those. Again, the county's going to bring the netting out, hopefully by the end of the month, so that we'll have new netting instead of holes and nets with balls flying out across the ball fields. The scoring tables need to be tore down and rebuilt. Now, I don't know if they need to be rebuilt. There's debate over how that, from the county level or the county's perspective, what that looks like. Is that raised scoring tables or is that something sitting on the ground that's not wood in material that maybe will last longer? Again, all of those things we can talk about later. But certainly, I think that's something that's priority, it's high on the priority list. The roofs on the dugouts, high on the priority list. So those three are the big three. And I certainly think that this amount of money will cover those three items and possibly more. I mean, I know there's some painting, again, nothing to do with safety, but just aesthetics, painting that needs to be done to sort of match the dugouts, the scoring tables with the concession stand or, you know, vice versa. So I think those are things that can happen in the short term. Again, storage building is important, but from a safety standpoint, I don't think that it's, you know, as high as the other things. But something that we're seriously interested in seeing happen so that these programs can store their, not only the programs, but also the county. They store stuff in those buildings too, in terms of chalk and field maintenance equipment, that type of thing, so.
Of course. My concern was the scoring tables.
Those things are high, yeah.
But I do agree with Commissioner Rainey that, you know, we're just not in the practice without a list of, you know, costs in just saying we're going to give money. So I do have concerns with not actually having an itemized list in front of us and at least estimated costs over a pair. I don't know if you have that, that you could provide us, but, you know, going in. Go ahead.
Sure. And I appreciate that and I understand where you're coming from. And preferably, I would have this all laid out. But the reality is, in the construction world, and most of this is construction-related, you know, we kind of need to know what funding is available before we can even go and start trying to get estimates or bids on what it is that this is going to, you know, take care of. I don't like, I'm not asking us to write a blank check. I mean, I think I could possibly even amend my motion to say we would appropriate up to $25,000, maybe a way to handle it. And then, once the work's done, then of course, the city would be invoiced. But under no circumstances would it be more, based on this board's action, more than $25,000. I mean, I think there's ways that we can do what you're trying to accomplish and then we can see what those exact costs are. But I just don't know how else to do it at this point. Other than know what's available in the budget to be able to go out and develop the budget, if that makes sense.
Well, even with the county, when you go to the county, you're going to have to provide them with a list because it's their property. So they will have to approve that you did, to do the work. Now, I don't know if it has to be official. You know, I'm sure Parks and Recs may have a certain amount of money, but if we're actually using their facilities and we're doing these improvements, so there's going to have to be some kind of collaboration with them.
In the county, certainly, at least through correspondence that I've had with Gordon Hampton at Williams County Parks and Recs, it's my understanding that, you know, they want to see some of these things happen as badly as, you know, we want to see some of these things happen. It's just a matter of where they are in terms of funding. I know they have funding for some improvements this year to other facilities. Fairview just does, it's not on the list, you know, this particular year. But you're right, everything would have to be ultimately approved. It's my understanding that that process is not necessarily a lengthy process. And in fact, it may just be a matter of saying, we're re-roofing the concession, excuse me, re-roofing the dugouts. The Parks, Parks and Rec says, great, re-roof the dugouts. I mean, it may be that simple. Again, I understand the concern completely. And I wished I could come in here with an itemization and say, "This is what it's going to cost for the roofs, this is what it's going to cost for paint." It's difficult to do that when you don't really know what budget number you're starting with. And that's the difficulty. And if this board prefers that I go out and come back with more definitive numbers, then I'm fine doing that as well. I'll approach it however this board, you know, sees fit.
Yes, Commissioner.
Would it be appropriate maybe to amend your proposition to say, let's earmark this money? Because we're still in an issue, this is a government bid, I would assume, or would it not be? If the parks?
It wouldn't be because of the amount for each. It's not, it's not, it's not an amount for the entire improvement. It would be the amount for each part of the improvement. And none of those amounts collectively would rise to the level of having to be bid out.
Who would then approve the bids or the costs? Once we get a bid back, because you're still going to get a bid of some sort, even if you're not doing an official bidding out process? Who's going to be in charge of determining, okay, we like this amount, let's do it?
I can answer that. That would be me.
Okay.
As it goes through, once we, if this is approved tonight, and let's say for my purposes, you're at $25,000. The bid law is $15,000 or less. So if we don't exceed $15,000 and we only have $25,000 total, then that's where you are. But the individual projects, say as an example, the roof on, or the roofs on the dugouts would likely be one contractor for one thing. The scoring tables would be another issue. The pouring of the concrete and installation of the batting cages and the netting would be another issue. And in our conversations with Commissioner Jones earlier tonight, his concern, as was Mr. Crutcher's, was take care of the safety issues first. Let's move forward and make sure that whatever we do, we can move forward the safety issues concerning that. In some help for that, he did mention that the county does have its own electrical, or electricians in those type staffing. So I think there would be some partnerships, even if it's just in kind out there. But I think his concern, and he expressed this to us, was he would like to help. But unfortunately, the calendar is not our friend and their opportunity to be able to help with their meetings, which take place in the next week or so. That's a long answer to your question. The short answer is, we'd get the bids, those would come to be invoiced to the city. We would make sure they accomplish what we want to do. We'd move forward with that work to make sure it was done. And then any future discussion would be in the coming year's budget or in a partnership with the county commission at that time.
And that was my concern. I didn't want us to just pass this and down the road try to figure out who's going to be in charge of doing this. You're doing it great. It'll get taken care of.
Yes, sir.
So no work could be done until the bids were brought to you, approved by you?
Correct. We'd have them bring the cost, whatever those estimates are. Once we had those, we were confident in those and we'd move forward with the work as quickly as we could to make sure. Again, I think if I'm hearing the calendar right, we're at mid-April, which gives us about six weeks if we do this tonight to get some of that work done. And from what we've heard, I don't think that schedule is unrealistic. It also gives us, as a city, the opportunity to go to the county commission and say, "We have in fact, we have in fact performed these improvements at the park. There are additional things." And I think that will further us along in being able to get additional funds from the county once we've gone through that process.
Vice Mayor, can you give the three safety issues and do? I would, I think I'd almost feel better if we had three items up to a certain amount and then you could, the most important. And then that would give us some time to figure out cost and punch lists and the rest of the stuff.
Well, I think the three items would be the roofs, the dugouts. And when I say roofs, I'm not just talking about shingles or tin or whatever it is, metal, whatever it is we put on there. I'm talking about the actual structural part, the, whatever it's called, the plywood frame, thank you. That part of it as well. As you can tell, I'm.
You're all a carpenter.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I know a lot about construction. The scores tables need to be torn down and something put there to replace those. Again, the what is still to be determined, but nonetheless, need to be torn down and something replaced there. The concrete pads to the. The concrete pads to the, to the batting cages would be number three on my, on my list. This is Shannon Crutcher's list, no one else's, I'm just coming up with this, but. And then after that, I think we're into more of the maintenance building, that type of thing. But I think those three, those three things. And, and again, I think part of this $25,000 could go to the painting, because when you put this, this wood and whatever else up, it's gonna have to be painted. I mean, and part of that would be painting that and, and, and that paint being matched to the concession stand, or the concession stand matched to that paint, just from an aesthetic standpoint. So I think that would be part of it. So let's just say roofs on the dugouts, scoring tables, concrete pads, and then the paint to, to make all of that match and aesthetically look okay. And then, again, I think down the road, we can talk more about this building, but I think those are the most pressing, the ones I just went over.
Is there a representative from the park besides you here?
I'm not a representative of the park.
Okay.
I'm, I'm a member of the Fairview Recreation Association, but the Fairview Recreation Association is a nonprofit organization that, we don't own the park. We simply encourage and promote participation in youth athletics. This money is not going to the Fairview Recreation Association. This money's for, for the Fairview Titans, or the Fairview Soccer. This money is going to the park, and it's, and it's trying, the idea behind this is to form that partnership with Williamson County, so that we can hopefully get some of these matching funds on similar projects in the future, because I think, I mean, this is just the start of things that really need to happen. I mean, we need more in terms of youth athletics. I mean, we need, we need a football facility, in my opinion. I mean, we're using the high school field, we're, we're practicing football on baseball fields, there's a lot of things we need. And if anybody was here has noticed the turnout of individuals that has come to some of these meetings in the past, and we talked about youth sports, the, the thing that they want to see is, is, you know, the city try to figure out a way to have this partnership with the county to be able to fund some of those things that simply the county just can't do, or do at all. So, but to answer your question, I, I don't, I sit on a nonprofit that uses the facility, but I don't, other than that, I don't have any, any interest in this, besides the interest of our children and, as a city commissioner.
Okay, so this would actually be a City of Fairview project, just for the record. And so it's not gonna go, and so there will be a representative that will present the bids to the city, and Mr. Collins will be the gatekeeper for the activity.
And I don't want to get confused with the, with terminology. We're not talking about bids, because there's nothing that would require any bidding, to my knowledge, at least at this point. We would be talking about the invoicing, and the city would sort of oversee the project. Again, that's just a matter of terminology, I just don't want us to get confused.
Well, I mean, part of me thinks of, you know, like, painting, it's something, upkeep and maintenance is important, but is that something as the city, and we can get volunteer citizens to do, we buy the paint, those kind of things, have they been looked at? What, you know, is it something, can city staff do some of the work? You know, those kind of things. I know the county is gonna have guidelines of who can come on their property and how it's gonna be done, so I just want to make sure that we're very clear on what's going on, who's responsible.
Thank you.
You got that answer?
Well, I, I think I do. I mean, hopefully, it's been answered. I think, I mean, the city is the one, I mean, we're appropriating the money, but the city is the one overseeing this project. I mean, so the city's gonna be ultimately responsible for making sure that those, those things get funded, and that the appropriate work that's supposed to be getting done is getting done. You asked the second part of that, and I don't remember what it was.
Well, I'm just worried about the county, like, we're doing it, so now we're the ones that's gonna take the money from the city budget, we're gonna be responsible, but not having that county, and besides, you know, a handshake of, you know, we're gonna be there to help, we just kind of need to make sure that it goes through the county process, and make sure that, because we, we can't decide workers go on county property and do the work.
I understand, and certainly, all of that would, would be run through Parks and Rec. I mean, I, we're not gonna go out there tomorrow and start tearing, you know, tearing things down. I mean, that's not how the process would work. As far as volunteers, I mean, certainly, I, I know most of these nonprofits that, that promote participation in these, these sports, whether it's football, baseball, basketball, softball, whatever it is, we need all the volunteers we can get in those nonprofits, I mean, that are willing to come out and do some of this work at these parks. And certainly, we're interested in entertaining that idea, and I think that anybody, I think that we all, or I do, as a, as a city commissioner, I want to see this $25,000 go as far as we can make it go, to accomplish some of these things. And so any of that volunteer work that could happen, great. I know, I know in the past, I can, I can tell you, last year, we was able to get the Crosspoint Church involved, and they did come out and they painted some picnic tables last year, and then we, in turn, painted some of the poles that surround, support poles that surround the actual concession stand to sort of match those picnic tables. So there's a considerable amount of volunteer work that'll go, go into this. As far as it being approved by the county, nothing's gonna happen until somebody from the county has given the green light. I mean, you know, that's gonna happen, but again, as far as the volunteer, I mean, yeah, absolutely. If we can get somebody to volunteer their time to, to accomplish some of this, or, or labor, or whatever it is, great. I want to see this, like I said, go as far as it can go.
Any other discussions down here? Okay, any other? So are we good with the wording, Brandy? If you will go back, and, so we're gonna do "up to," or was that in the original wording?
The original motion was asking for $25,000, to appropriate $25,000 for improvements to the Fairview Ballpark.
I, I don't mind amending that to say up to $25,000. I don't know that it necessarily makes a difference, but I'll say up to, I, I'll amend my motion, or withdraw my original motion, and make a motion that we appropriate up to $25,000 for improvements to the Fairview Ballpark.
Do I need to withdraw my second and re-second?
I think you have to withdraw your second.
Then let me withdraw and re-second.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Discuss and take action on Resolution 2002-17.
In agreement with city engineer for revisions to subdivision regulations, design review manual, zoning map, and zoning ordinances.
Okay. Let's see, who has that agenda item on there?
I don't, I don't have it, Mayor, but I, I'll be glad to share what I know about it. Mr. Burks, I think you're on the, you wanna share?
I'll be happy to. What we're wanting to do is update our subdivision regulations, our zoning ordinances, our zoning map, as, as well as our design review manual. And I believe Mr. Owen is here, he'd like to step forward, and Mr. Owen is our city engineer, and that's who we're asking to do this. He is probably the only person who knows what all of our ordinances are. I think he's the only person who actually has a master list, that's handwritten notes and additions and things that have been removed from his copy. Mr. Owen, can you kind of explain what the process would be, and what the purpose of this is?
Sure. Thank, thank you, Commissioner Burks, and, and thank you, Board, for having us before you tonight. As, as some of you know that have previously served on the planning commission, or have had dealings with the planning commission, there's been a need for some time now to basically codify all prior changes to your three primary documents, the subdivision regulations, the zoning ordinance, and the design review manual, into a single parent document, basically a single source of information that can be drawn upon by prospective developers, citizens, your city staff, and the planning commission themselves, and, and this board as well, as it pertains to zoning actions, so that it's a less cumbersome process to review and understand if particular proposals meet or do not meet your requirements that are currently adopted. The other thing that, that this action would do, we would seek to identify and eliminate any discrepancies that may be found between the three documents. In an ideal world, and not just in Fairview, but in, in any community in Tennessee, each of the three documents performs in silos for what they regulate, but the reality is that, that's not true. There are some overlapping aspects that are indirect in nature, and so when there are some discrepancies between those documents, in essence, the practice that, that the City of Fairview has enacted is to revert to the least restrictive. So if you have two different standards in your book somewhere, legally, the city has reverted to the least restrictive of those two different standards. So we, we would seek to, to clean some of those discrepancies up, and then we would also look at clarifying, to a great degree, the submittal and review and approval processes for the different submittals that come before the planning commission, and then again, that come before you if there are rezoning action. It is not the intention of this action to drastically alter, or change, or add, or remove any current regulations that are in place. Any regulations that are currently being practiced that would be altered in any manner would certainly be identified in a final document, a deliverable that, that would come before the planning commission and the Board of Commissioners, and then if, if there was any discussion or changes that needed to be made, then that would be done. What, what I envisioned, the end result of this process would be that the subdivision regulations and the design review manual would be presented, as, as revised, would be presented to the planning commission for their review and approval, formal approval by a vote. In order to do those things, a public hearing, at least one public hearing would have to take place. And then the zoning ordinance, as most of you are aware, is, is under the purview of this board, and, but it cannot be acted upon to be revised until there is a recommendation from the planning commission. So the planning commission would see all three documents and review and approve the BOC unless you direct the planning commission. Otherwise, would just see the zoning ordinance for final adoption, after the planning commission has reviewed that, and then you would have a public hearing on the zoning ordinance, and then you would take action on that. The same would go for the map, the zoning map as well. This would result in a definitive date of new adoption for, again, not necessarily new standards, but a new parent document to where we can go back, the city can go back and say, on this date, we wholly adopted these guidelines and these three different regulations, and, and we can move forward in a clean slate, if that's, is that what you were looking for, Mr. Burks?
Also, the.
Go ahead.
In our, in your proposal, there was some additional services we could request, and that was preparing a GIS zoning map and proposed land use map, correct?
Correct.
And that's so that we would have a digital copy that we could put on our city website, we could have, everyone could have access to it.
Correct.
And if anyone's unaware, right now, our zoning and land use maps are a map that hang on the wall. I think one's in the conference room, and one's off in the hallway over here, that Ms. Sharon has to take a grease pencil to when it changes, and try to color it in, and you really hope no one rubs up against it and erases that. The idea, I think, is to put everybody on the same footing. So when a builder comes to our city and wants to build a project, he knows what the rules are, what he's gonna be required to do. The planning commission will then be able to look at and say, okay, you knew what the rules are, we can now know what all the rules are. Everyone's gonna be on the same footing, it's gonna be good for business, it'll help streamline that process.
Okay. And Tom, this is something that the last board put on their budget, or their want list, right? Last year, was there cost, this?
This, this was, it was in the last budget amendment you passed.
Yeah, but it was on that project want list that we had last year that we set down? Okay, and so we allotted the money from that list. Thank you, yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Couple of questions, Mr. Owen. If I, if I read the proposal right, as far as the cross-referencing for inconsistencies, and I guess codifying of the, of the documents, we're looking at a timeframe, and you may have said this earlier, and I missed it, around May, the first of May, for that part?
If you go back to the prior sentence in the proposal, it says, if the BOC chooses to adopt at their January 19th meeting, then we would be looking at.
Okay, so sometime, sometime after May.
Correct, yeah. I, I think we've gotten a little bit later, which, I mean, that's fine, I mean, you know, I'm not in any hurry.
I do recall seeing that now, though. Right, so we, we may be looking at June or July.
June or July is kind of what we'd be looking for.
And I assume the same, I think there was 120, 180-day timeframe on the, the land use map and the actual zoning map?
Yes, sir, the. The map would take a little bit longer time, as in an effort to try to, the goal would be to coordinate with the county GIS department and, and see what information would be available, be made available to the city, and at what cost that might be made available, if there would be any, and then we could take that, those shape files that are provided by the county and, and create that database for the city.
And then, before the respective boards or commissions adopted the, the changes, and I know we talked about, or the proposal talked about there being no substantive changes, what I would like to see happen is that, and of course, all these boards and commissions should have the opportunity to do this, if there needs to be substantive changes, at least from the board's perspective, or commission's perspective, that we do that, obviously, before we ultimately adopt the new versions. Because I think there may be, there may be some things that we're interested in changing versus getting this approved, and then going back, you know, wanting to amend something after the fact, I would rather do it all at one time.
Yes, and, and, and that's, that's understandable. The, the challenge that that might present is to delay kind of creating that baseline of where, where we are today, and then move forward, because that's, that's really, and I think you'll find this out, as, as you pursue the comprehensive planning, I know you've discussed that as a board, and, and trying to pursue that avenue, not just for planning, but the whole city. When you start talking about substantive changes, then you inherently enact a lot more emotion, and, 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 I don't want to say disagreement, but certainly discussion on, well, I, I think it should be this, I think it should be that. So that's the only thing I would caution you on.
You just changed my mind.
Okay.
I, I agree with you now that you put it in that perspective, so.
But, but certainly, if, if, if that time comes, and, and there's something that's unanimous to say, we, we've, we've, we've talked about doing this, but we've never taken formal action, I think this would be a good time to take that formal action, and that's a unanimous deal, then, yeah, there's no reason why we couldn't pursue something along those, those lines.
But regardless, if there's, if there are substantive changes in the future, we will at least be able to have that baseline, to go back and make sure that all of the cross-references or other parts of particular codes will all be consistent.
And, and then just kind of big picture here, you know, I think what, what Mr. Collins has envisioned is, is kind of what I've encouraged him to envision, is when you do have your new planning director, you know, on board, that basically, one of their job responsibilities would be, at least annually, to take. least annually, to take what was done in the prior calendar year as individual ordinances or resolutions, and incorporate those, codify them into a parent document, and present those parent documents to each of the respective boards, maybe in January or February of each year. And so that way, you don't end up with books that are, potentially haven't been updated for six, seven, eight, 10 years.
And that'll be part of MUNI code. Will this be part of MUNI code as well?
It'll be a small portion of it. MUNI code will have everything that's codified, but ordinance will be available. Everything that is not ordinance will still be available on the website as a part of the document that Mr. Owen's talked about, put together. So we'll have every bit of that. So if it's ordinance, yes, sir. If it's planning commission or some other legislative body, then it would be in the appropriate format and available.
Okay. All right. I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, first and second, Commissioner Burks, you had a comment.
I was just going to say, I think before we, we have to know where we are before we know where we want to go with it. And this is the process of us knowing where we are.
Well, and I, I mean, cleaning up our codes and making our books coordinate is a conversation we've been having for quite some time. So now the budget is finally where we do have the money that we can spend, and our hopes were that this year would be. That'll be huge for the city, just especially as we go forward in development, and just make it easier for people to understand, you know, these builders and people come in to understand what our codes are. Did y'all have any comments down here? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I knew when I saw you, I was like, oh, man, the meeting just got long. Thank you for coming. Have a nice drive back. E., discuss planning commission, Commissioner Rainey.
Thank you, Mayor. During the election and since the election, you know, we've had citizens coming to us concerned about the planning commission. And I think that we've all kind of been concerned about the planning commission. I think they're fair and honest concerns. We have members who are conducting business from their chair on the planning commission. We have, you know, no one seems to be concerned about that when that happens. We have, it's kind of heavy with developers. And I think we owe it to the citizens of Fairview to have an open and fair discussion about those situations and try to figure out some kind of solution, and then be able to stand behind our decision, whatever it may be. But to try to propel the city into the right direction, and the planning commission, you know, they really have the power to do that. So I think we need to really discuss where we want to go, what do we have to do to do it, and who do we need to help us do that?
Go ahead, vice mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. I don't disagree that there are certainly some things that have happened over the course of my two and almost a half years on this board that have been concerning to me on the planning commission level. I think it's nice to have some of the knowledge that we have on the planning commission from a developer, builder standpoint. I think it's helpful at times to have that knowledge there. I do, I am concerned about the number of recusals that I've seen over the course of, again, the past year or so, especially now that building is really back in full swing with members on the planning commission. I think it's concerning that on one particular meeting, a couple of meetings ago, there were at least three members of our planning commission that had to recuse themselves from a vote. And that's going to happen from time to time, and it's not so much that they had to recuse themselves, it's the process in which that happened. And I think I even learned a little bit more, maybe, about some of the reasons behind some of that more recently. But to digress just a little bit, sometimes we use the words recuse and abstain, those words can be used interchangeably, when in fact, they're really not interchangeable. They're two very different things, and I've pulled up just a little bit of case law on the difference between the two, so if you'll indulge me just a second. Recusal means to disqualify from participation in the decision on grounds of, that there's some prejudice that could be involved if you participate in the decision, or that you have some personal involvement, or that there's a conflict of interest. And when you recuse yourself from a vote, and this is straight out of a case, this is a Vermont case, it says ideally, the person should leave the room, so that there's no way that she or he can influence the procedure. All members who participate in a hearing must be and appear to be impartial in their judgment. And one of the things that I saw happen a couple of meetings ago, was a member of the planning commission recused themselves and get up, and I thought they were leaving the room when this vote was about to take place. And I was like, man, that's the right thing to do. Well, instead of leaving the room, they walked to the podium and actually participated as the developer in that discussion. And that was concerning to me. I don't think that's appropriate now. Do I think us having an up or down vote on removing or disqualifying members from the planning commission is the right approach for this board to take? No, I don't. And I wouldn't personally vote to do that, and here's why. I think when you move, remove someone, or attempt to remove someone from elected office, it's, in this case, appointed office, it's very difficult to do. And we're elected and we appoint those members to that board, and either we appointed them, and I guess this board hasn't had the pleasure of doing that yet, but the previous board appointed those individuals to that board. To remove someone that's appointed, to me, is right below removing someone that's elected. It's just a step down. And I think that there needs to be some significant standard or some significant burden of proof to accomplish that type of action. And I think it's an action that shouldn't be taken lightly, because there's been an administrative legislative body that appointed those individuals, whether you agree with the appointment or don't agree with the appointment, that happened. There was a majority vote to appoint those individuals to the board. And if we're going to, and again, I'm not saying this is the direction that we're going, but I want to just make my feelings known about an up or down vote on removal. If we're going to take that step, which I think is the most draconian of the steps to take, then we better be able to articulate what it is that an individual has done that justifies that type of action. And unless we can do that, and we can lay that out with findings of fact, that would get us to draw the conclusion that that individual needs to be removed, then we shouldn't do it. I think that's a slippery slope, and I get that we want to see change within the city, and I think we're making change. What I would suggest that we do instead is, and we've talked about this, and I don't know that it's on the agenda tonight, I think it may be on the agenda tonight, about term limits for us, and I think that needs to start at the top with this board, term limits for us, and I think we need to put term limits on all of these other boards and commissions so that these individuals will term out over time and have to sit out for a period before they can run for that particular board, or maybe even another board within the city. I think that's the better approach to handle the situation. Am I, do I feel warm and fuzzy about our planning commission, or some of the other boards for that matter, in our city? No, not necessarily. I don't. And I get the citizens' concern. I get it. But again, I just feel like that that is a, it's a drastic measure, if that's the direction we're going, to try to remove individuals. Now, I think there's some things that we need to have serious conversation about. I think there may be members of our planning commission that have not kept up with their training hours that we need to look at, and I think that we may need to even look at additional training. And that's something that Mr. Collins and I talked about earlier, and I know that I think Commissioner Burks, who is the, on the committee, planning commission committee, excuse me, had that conversation too. So that's something we probably need to look at, and I think that's something, and Mr. Collins talked about earlier, that's something that we can possibly do in-house to get that training. I'm interested in that training. I'm not even on the planning commission. I'm interested in knowing more about planning and zoning. So that's something we need to look at. Again, are there problems? There are problems, but we need to address, I think training can fix some of that, and I think time can fix some of that, just through the process of individuals terming out. Do we need new, fresh ideas? Absolutely. Does the makeup of the planning commission need to be looked at? Maybe. Maybe we need an architect, maybe we need an engineer, maybe we need a property law attorney. I don't know. Maybe we need to look at that, the composition. But again, I think, although in the campaign, we hear these things, I remember hearing things when I was campaigning as well, although we hear those things, there's a way to accomplish it that, in my opinion, would be the better way to accomplish it, instead of an up or down vote on individuals, one by one. But I'm certainly interested in hearing ideas. I appreciate the fact that you put it on the agenda. I appreciate that we're having the conversation. I think it's a conversation that needs to be had. And I think it's a conversation that needs to be had about all the boards and commissions, for that matter, not just the planning commission specifically. And I think there needs to be some policy put in place, and again, I don't know necessarily the process. I guess since this board appoints the planning commission, maybe there could be a resolution from this board on how to handle recusals. But if an individual has to recuse themselves from a vote, I don't think they have to necessarily not come to the meeting and risk us not having a quorum to do business. Might not be able to do business on their particular item, but if they have something they're having to recuse themselves from, and it's because of a direct conflict of interest or otherwise, I think they need to leave the room and not participate in the discussion. I just think that would be good practice, and really, it's not only protecting the city, it's really protecting them as well. You know, this isn't personal. This is, I'm saying this to try to protect these individuals, because right now, as we all know, there's litigation pending specifically over planning commission issues and board of commissioner issues with respect to development. And so it's something we have to be cognizant of, we have to look at. And I think we need to put that type of policy in place, whether it's via resolution or whatever the appropriate, you know, way to get there is. But I think we need to put that in place, where you have to leave the room and you can't participate. The second thing I was going to say a while ago, I told you what recusal was, abstention is something entirely different. Abstention is where you just have inadequate information to be able to judge whatever the particular agenda item is on the merits, or you're unable to make a decision. That's abstention. So we need to make sure that when we're using those words, that we're using the right word. Recusal, you have a direct interest. Abstention, you just can't, you don't have enough information to vote on it. And again, I may be telling you something you know, but I thought it was interesting to read that, and particularly that case that talks about that you should leave, you should leave the room, you shouldn't participate. And it was a little disheartening when I saw what I saw in terms of an individual go down and actually participate from the podium in a discussion about their particular project. Because whether you, I'm long-winded, just bear with me, whether you think that you're having influence or not, and maybe you're not, but there's always going to be the perception that you had influence over that vote, even though you were participating from down there at that podium versus up here. And it's simply because you sit on the board with those individuals, some of the other individuals on that board may have projects coming down the pike, you know, obviously they're going to want your support, you want their support, there's that potential for there to be influence, whether you realize it or not. And I said this for a long time, and I argued this point when we talked about nepotism many months ago. It's the same thing. There's that influence from commissioners sitting up here over a city manager that is the boss of employees that may be your relatives. There's that influence. Whether you intend for that influence to be there or not, there's that influence. So, and then not to mention the perception, like I said, it's almost like anything that you get approved, there's going to be a black cloud hanging over it. So I really don't know why you would want to participate in it. So that's my take on the planning commission. Do there need to be changes? Yes. How we get there is open for, you know, for discussion.
And Commissioner, that's one reason why I brought it up tonight, because I think it is something that needs to be discussed, and I think that we need to discuss it openly. And I think that we need to really think about our decisions and be able to, two years from now, when maybe some of the terms may expire, be able to still be sitting here and thinking, we're glad we left them on the board. And I think that's a concern of the citizens, that if, what can happen in two years? Just a thought.
Go ahead, Commissioner Burks.
Respectfully, Commissioner Crutcher, I don't think we have to state why we remove a person from the planning commission. I believe the statute is, they serve at our pleasure. Is that correct? And that is what it is. If we decide, for whatever reason, we want to remove a person outside the mayor's designate, we can vote to remove the person. I don't think we even have to have a good reason, other than they sit at our pleasure. We do need to put in place term limits, not just for us, but for all the boards and commissions. However, saying, if we think there's a problem, waiting and letting term limits take care of the issue is just, that's just dodging the issue, it's being the ostrich and putting our head in the sand. Again, I'm not necessarily saying we need to vote up and down, everyone, do we want to keep them or not, right now, I'm not saying that. But if we decide as a group that there's an issue, then we need to deal with the issue. We don't need to pass the buck and hope attrition takes care of it. I don't think that's what our job is. Myself and Mr. Crutcher know this term very well. It's called an appearance of impropriety. It comes up in the legal profession, particularly when you ask a judge to recuse himself. The courts are required to avoid an appearance of impropriety, and no one's accusing a judge in that situation that they're going to do anything wrong. The problem is, it doesn't pass the smell test, it just looks bad. And that's the issue we are having here with the planning commission. When you're sitting up here and you're voting to approve a subdivision or whatever building project, and you have discussion on that matter, and let's say it's turned down, and then the very next item that comes up is a builder or contractor that's on the planning commission gets up, walks down, stands at the podium, and presents his project. It appears that builder has pushed out his competition, and is now asking us to approve his project. And I'm not accusing anyone of doing anything wrong. No one's ever shown me anything that's actually been done wrong. The problem is, it just looks really bad. My goal for the City of Fairview in 2018 is to have no new lawsuits. That might be a very lofty goal to have, but that's the goal that I want to aspire to. And I think this is an area that creates potential litigation. When we tell a developer no, and then a similar project's approved by someone sitting on the board, we've got an issue. And I really think that's something that can be avoided. Unfortunately, our builders are some of our most vocal people on the planning commission, because they have a very large knowledge base on the very issues we discuss each month. And that's going to hurt. If we remove those people, we're going to lose that knowledge. But the question becomes, is it worth it? When we have other people in the community, we have builders that live here that don't build here. I have nothing against builders. God knows, we need more houses in Fairview. Apparently, there's nothing for sale currently. But when you're building in Fairview, there's going to be an inherent appearance of conflict. And that's the real issue I have.
Go ahead, Commissioner Lucas.
I apologize if I sound funny, I've been sick. I can appreciate what Commissioner or Vice Mayor Crutcher was saying, you know, you don't... You know, you don't want to just start letting people go left and right. In my line of work, the last thing, the last resort is to fire somebody. That's always the last resort. But at the same time, I do believe that the planning commission needs some major restructuring. I have a major problem when I see, as part of your job, it's your job to vote on things. It's our job up here to vote on things. And if every other meeting or every meeting, I was having to recuse myself from a vote, I'm not able to do my job. In fact, that's constant. And like they've already said, recusing yourself and then walking down to the podium and stating your case, or even I've seen recusing yourself and staying at your seat and still stating your case. That's not good. When you look at planning commissioners who have missed more than 50% of their meetings in the last however long, that's a problem. It ceases to be a perception of you doing something wrong. You're just not doing your job at that point, in my opinion. So I think this board seriously needs to look at restructuring that. How that goes about, I don't know for sure. But I'd like to see, I'd like to see the board changed in some way, very soon. Because it's, like Commissioner Burke said, we've got several litigations. So it's, it's not just, there's a perception of doing some things wrong. It's costing the city ultimately. And so I agree with Commissioner Rainey. We've got to, we've got to fix this thing. If we don't fix it today, I think we're just going to be in worse shape next year, for sure, if not sooner.
My response.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you. A couple of things, just to hit on some things that Commissioner Burke said that I think are important. He's absolutely right. The planning commission members do serve at the pleasure of the BOC. That's what the statute says and our city companion, city ordinance, says, to my knowledge. What I was talking about is sort of giving some legislative deference to the process that took place in appointing those individuals. And, you know, certainly at any point in time, we can make the decision. I just think that it would be good practice, instead of having no reason whatsoever. I mean, maybe you have your own reason that you've internalized and compartmentalized whatever it is. But instead of having no reason, I think we should, out of a courtesy to the legislative process and the appointment process, be able to articulate what it is that has happened. You know, we may say we've recognized the problem, and we've gone through some of those problems tonight. But somebody that's sitting here, although maybe they should recognize the problem, maybe they simply don't realize there's a problem. Maybe they don't realize that whatever action it is that they took was wrong. And my question is, have we taken any type of corrective action to try to fix that? And I don't know that we have, ever. And so I would prefer that we try to see or take some sort of corrective measure to try to fix whatever behavior or problem it is that we see. Because as a city, we have put, we've put time into these individuals that have been appointed. We've put money into these individuals that have been appointed. We've put these individuals through training. I believe, I hope, they're supposed to be having four hours a year. They bring to the table a level of knowledge that you can't just replace it like that. So I just think we need to be more cautious in the approach versus just an up or down vote on individuals. And then I, and I'll just be honest. I mean, if we're going to have that vote, I don't guess you have to tell me your reason. But I would be interested to ask, what is it about this particular person? If we're going down one by one, I would want to know, before I could even vote on that, what is it about this particular person that you see as the issue? What specific facts or specific information can you point to to substantiate what it is you're alleging? I just think that's how the process should work. I mean, there should be a level of due process involved. You know, I'm not saying they're entitled to that necessarily. They do serve at our pleasure. But I just think the process, there should be some level of, this is what I see, this is the problem. Have we taken corrective action? We do that with our employees. And although these are appointed individuals, I don't know why they'd be any different. I wouldn't want you guys to be able to go to an up or down vote, maybe just because you don't like what I vote on tonight, next week, to boot me off the board. Now thankfully, it's a little more difficult than that for an elected official. But if you were going to, I want you to bring formal charges against me. I want you to present something to the ethics committee, or I guess in this place, the ethic, this instance, the ethics council, which will be the city attorney. I want you to present something, tell me what it is that I did, and give me a chance to defend myself, or at least explain myself. And I just don't think that we have engaged in that process. Do I think that the planning commission is perfect? No. I'm not making any secret about that. Does there need to be changes? Yes. But there's a process to do it. And look, I've only been here for a little over two years. Do I know everything about city government? No. Do I know everything about being a city commissioner? No. But I've learned a little bit over the past two years about how processes work within government and the steps to take. And I've probably made some people mad along the way. And that's fine, because I really didn't handle it. And reflecting back, I didn't really handle it the way I probably should have handled it. And that's how we learn, and that's fine. But, you know, let's give these individuals the opportunity to know what it is they did wrong, so they can do like I did and reflect and say, okay, you know what? They're right. The board's right. We need to fix this behavior. We need to fix this problem. How can we do it? And I just think there's a right way to get there and a wrong way to get there. Again, I know you heard this in campaigns. I know you hear this now, and I get all that. It's just, there's a way to handle things, in my opinion, in a way not to. And I just wish that if we're going to go that route, and if this board chooses to go to an up or down vote, and that's what the majority votes for, then I'm going to support what this board does. I'm not going to say I want to vote for it, but I'm going to support what this board does. Because I think that's what we need to do as commissioners. But I don't think that's the right, that's the right process. And, you know, I hope that, again, we give them, those individuals, the common courtesy to say, this is what it is. This is why we're taking this action.
Well, Vice Mayor, I don't think there's been a suggestion that we do an up and down vote. I think it's been, what are we going to do? What is the solution? So I don't, and I think that what we hear in campaign and what we see with our own eyes, you know, that's a little different. It's not just that, you know, people are coming to us and saying, what are you going to do about the planning commission? We, you, all of us, see it. So it's not like we can pretend that we don't see it. You've admitted it yourself. We see it. So what is the solution? I mean, so if we say, okay, we're going to counsel them, then are we going to say, if that doesn't work, then we're going to do something else? I mean, what could be the solution?
My response.
Yes, please.
And Commissioner Rainey, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I think at this point, there's limited solutions. I mean, I think it's certainly not, we don't have a ton of options. I mean, I think we do either go to an up or down vote on individuals as to their continued service on the planning commission. I think that's one option. I think the other option is that we take some sort of corrective action on the part of the BOC to put some sort of policy in place to specifically deal with how to handle recusals. I mean, I think that's something that needs to happen, really regardless of how we go forward. I mean, we need that in place. And that probably needs to be across the board, on any board or any commission, really. And I understand, since, again, since I've been here, I only can draw from my own experience, I've had to recuse myself one time. But it wasn't a recusal that I was directly, I directly stand to gain financially from. It was a recusal based off a professional relationship. So in that circumstance, I certainly didn't participate in the conversation. I don't think you should ever participate in the conversation. Should I have left the room? I don't know. I didn't stand to gain financially that. But if I should, I will, and that's fine. And maybe that's the policy we need to put in place across the board. If you have to recuse yourself, you have to leave, you have to leave the room. And, you know, maybe that's the way to go. I think that's one thing that needs to happen. Some other type of training, counseling on how to handle some of the situations that we've dealt with over the course of the past year or so. I mean, Fairview's growing. Fairview's changing. We're going through a growing period right now. People, you know, there's going to be another election next year. And I'm sure part of that election is going to be litigation that we've been involved in. Well, I'll just go ahead and tell you. The litigation that we've been involved in over the past two years has played a significant role in where we are and in our development. Do we like litigation? No. I don't like litigation. I'm an attorney. I hate it. But it has played a role. It has served a purpose. It has been functional in thrusting this city forward. Is it comfortable? No. It's not comfortable for any of us. Trust me. My name's been in a federal lawsuit. It's not comfortable. But it's part of the process. Would I do it again? Would I trade anything that's happened over the past two years? No, because I think it has got us to where we are today. And we're continuing to make changes. We're continuing to go in the right direction. And I don't want to see us take a step back or slow that progress down in how we handle this situation. So I've given you a couple of options. I mean, I think we're limited. Removal, put policy in place to try to fix some of the issues. Training, I think those are our options. And then term limits. I think term limits will fix some of this. Do I think we need people that serve on any of these boards for eight, 10, 12 years? No, I don't. I think we need new perspective, new ideas. I can tell you, if I run next year, that'll be my last term. I'm not running again after that. I mean, I don't think, I need to run past, if I'm fortunate enough for the citizens to let me again, eight years is my limit. I think at the end of eight years, my time has run its course. And we need new perspective, new ideas on this board. And I think that should go across the spectrum, on all boards and commissions. So I think that's the way to handle it. Those are the options. Unless someone has something different than I just come up with, I don't know what other options we have. And again, I'll support whatever the board chooses to do.
Commissioner Burks.
One issue I think we have is, Mr. Crutcher, as you've pointed out, has someone counseled them? Who's in a position to do that? Are we? And I'm not trying to be smart, but I'm being very serious. Do we have that authority to sit down the planning commission and say, hey, here's what you're doing wrong. Here's what we expect? Is that something that we actually have the authority to do? Is that appropriate? You speak about training. One issue we have is, we have three members sitting on the board, according to the document that our city engineer provided, that did not fulfill their training requirement. It's four hours per year. I think we had two that had one hour, and one, I think, that had three, if I recall from the document that was provided. That's a problem, if we're not getting our training in, because I can see some potential litigation occurring from that someday and being able to defend that litigation if we haven't done our required training. If they haven't done the required training, other than saying, hey, we're going to vote to vote up and down on this person, I'm not sure what the other recourse is, really. We have members who aren't attending required meetings. If you're required to be there, you're required to be there. There's no excuse to miss half of a required meeting that you're supposed to go to. That being said, I want everyone to understand how much work goes into being on the planning commission. I feel, some days I feel like I have three jobs. Three full-time jobs is what it feels like. The planning commission, I'll put in 15 or 20 hours in a month sometimes. I mean, that's, it's insane. And that's for $100 a month. That's what these ladies and gentlemen are working for, is $100 per month. So I can tell you, they're not doing it for the money. I assume they're doing it because they care about our city. And I'm not going to question that, because I do know how much work goes into that. However, we've got issues. We've got to fix those issues. There's no excuse to ignore them. The question is, how do we want to do that? And I think that's what we need, after having this discussion, we need to think about that. And we need to revisit this issue very soon. I don't think we need to make a decision tonight. I think these ladies and gentlemen deserve better than that, because they have put in a lot of time and work for our city. So I would ask to table the discussion, unless anyone has anything else they want to say. And let's revisit this issue after we give it the time and consideration that it deserves.
Go ahead, Commissioner Lucas.
I would just like to say, and kind of springboard and off of what Commissioner Burke said, you know, I appreciate the work that these folks do. It's definitely on my end, and I don't, I think on everybody's end. It's definitely nothing personal. It's not any one person. It's almost as a whole, which isn't necessarily fair to say either. But, you know, for me, it just comes down to, for maybe a lack of a better term in the real world, if you're required so many hours of training in order to do something, for me, it would be DOT compliance. If one of my drivers, his DOT card has expired, I can guarantee you, he's not running that day. And if he gets caught running that day, the fines are ridiculous. He'll lose his CDL license. He will lose his career. Not showing up for work, that's a big deal. And somehow, that kind of just seems to be okay. So some of these things, recusals, you know, maybe you don't know that when you recuse yourself, you're not supposed to talk. Prior to running for office, I didn't know that. But I know it now. But that maybe you can justify. Not showing up, though, I have a hard time with that. You know, you've got to do your four hours a year. That's not a lot to ask, I don't think. You know you got to do that, and you didn't do it. Did we have anybody that did four hours?
We had, everyone else did their four hours, and many of them went over four hours. I think the most was, not counting the city engineer, I think Mr. Lowman had 10 and a half hours, if I recall.
So how many did we have that didn't meet the requirement of four hours?
From the list I was provided, it was three members that did not meet their four hours.
Okay. But again, it's nothing personal on my end. Matter of fact, besides Commissioner Burke's, I don't know anybody on the planning commission. Have no interaction with them at all. So it's definitely nothing personal for me. I just want to see whatever is right for the city. You know, perception's not good in a lot of cases. And so I, you know, I agree with Derek, or Commissioner Burke, excuse me, that I don't think we should just hastily make a decision tonight. But at the same time, I don't like saying, well, let's address it next meeting. And next meeting turns into a month from now. A month from now turns into three months. And a year from now, we're talking about this same thing. I definitely don't want to see that happen. So I definitely think we need to take action sooner than later. Yesterday would be good. But obviously, that's not an option. So I'd like to see this back on the agenda for our next meeting.
I have a few comments. I've heard a lot of scuffle about this, but never really had one citizen contact me about it. So I know when you're running, you hear things. And I even mentioned in the last meeting that, you know, I really thought I understood what everybody wanted and came in as a new commissioner and put something on the agenda. But then, once I did, I got a lot of flack from citizens with the opposite side. So, you know, I just don't know. It's hard for me. It seemed very personal, and everybody keeps saying it's not personal. But it has seemed very, the scuttle that I've heard has seemed very personal. I can almost name the people that I think they're after to get. So I want to focus, which I think a lot of y'all said, this is not personal. And if so, that's fine. But we need to focus, how do we fix this problem? How do we move this problem forward? You have a planning commission that have donated many, you know, years of their life serving the city, because they're passionate about what they do, whether they're in the industry or just, you know, in some way serve. Years passed, we sat on boards where we didn't have people volunteer. And we changed that curve a couple of years ago, where we did have other people that wanted to serve. But either way, here we are today. I think there's a lot of things we could do, like the Vice Mayor said. I mean, you know what? Do we want fresh, new perspective? How do we get this? How do we, you know, do the term limits where we can start getting the board? I've heard several of y'all say that we're not posed to all builders, but we don't want to feel like, you know, over half of them are in the building industry. If that's the way you want to go, then, you know, I say we sit down and you draw it out. But let's take people out of it. If they do not get their But let's take people out of it. If they do not get their training hour, it was the city's responsibility to ensure that they had their training hours in. And we hold many workshops, and we've tried to provide that. Now, if they missed an absence, it's their responsibility because they didn't come to it to make it up. When you become a planning commission, a member, and I was as a citizen, not as a commissioner, I served on the planning commission, you get nothing. We say, here you go, have a seat, figure it out. So, um, you know, I think the problem reflects, and I can say the first, be the first to admit, the problem reflects is the board of commissioners and the city management at the time did not have that as a priority. There are bylaws that state what, you know, certain requirements. We can amend those bylaws. I mean, it's be really easy. If you wanted to add something in with the term limits or you want, how to abstain from a vote, it's, you know, it's easily, um, processed. And we can amend those bylaws. And we can even sit down, um, even in our planning meeting that we scheduled, and it'll be posted, uh, we can sit in the planning commission and actually talk about the ratio. What do you want the future ratio to look like? That is smart planning. To take a board just because a few citizens may have told a few people and say there's a problem and wipe it clear is just wrong precedence. So, um, I do think there's some ways. If we, if the biggest complaint is how they are abstaining, that's an easy fix. Let's fix the bylaws. We can do that today. Well, next meeting. If there's, um, there's several people that are rolling off, I mean, every year, starting, you know, this summer, we'll have three seats come up. And we can have that in place of what do we want? How do we want the ratio to look like? Do we want them to keep serving, or do we need, do they meet this new ratio? How do we come about it? So those are things. I just want the people taken out of it. And as a board, to have a vision of what we need to do to grow the city and what we think is the problem. You got to identify them, but we're not, we got to quit focusing on people. And this is a board and it's seats. Um, and that would be my only suggestion on how to handle. Go ahead, Commissioner Burks.
Respectfully, Madam Mayor, i- it's not about people. It's not being personal. It's not about necessarily what we heard when we were campaigning. It, it's seeing how these meetings run and watching it. We've all seen it. We don't even know who our officers are for the planning commission right now. I don't believe we have any. But that's a whole separate issue. But the planning commission has to, we've got to fix it. It, it's not personal to anyone. I don't know anyone on the planning commission well enough to have a personal issue with them. I, I don't. I, I just want this to work right. I want the process to appear fair to everyone that is on the commission, the people that are coming up before the commission, and, and our citizens. Everything needs to appear fair and appropriate. Not, I'm not out to get anybody. I, I just want the process to work. I want it to be appropriate. As far as the city's responsibility, the city put on six workshops for training hours. They only have to make it to four of those. That being said, we still had three members that, that were unable to do so for, for whatever reason and did not make it up from the documents I've been provided. So that's all I have to say.
So the city, Mr. All, maybe you can answer this question. The city put on six workshops this year. Okay. And were they the joint workshops between commission? Can you name what workshops they are?
No, 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 mostly the full plan.
Okay. I'd like a list of that, too, just to know and who's attended. I mean, sure, it's important conversations to have. Um, but the thing about it is, I think it's still training responsibility. When we, these new people came on, I, I don't know. I mean, I know you were a commissioner, and you said you wanted to learn as much about this. So you're probably eager to get in there. And I know as a, a planning commission, you take some responsibility. But I can probably go down a list of all those planning commissioners and ask what they got from the city when they started on the planning commission. It was li- little. So I do think it's important. I think we need to take some responsibility. Now, y'all may not have been on the board at the time, but I think at some points, if you're not equipped in these people, then it's some of your responsibility. And so I think that needs to be in consideration, and it's a way you can redirect some of the concerns. Go ahead, Commissioner Lucas.
City manager, did you have something to say?
Absent of your discussion of, of kind of where you've been, just, just some things quickly that, that have been talked about internally and beyond this, whatever the board would do for their purview would do. But, um, as a part of going forward for internally, what we've talked about, now, first off, the discussion of the bylaws, just quickly, I think the bylaws for the planning commission would have to be amended by the planning commission. It, I don't, I don't, I think that would be the appropriate method for that to move forward. Having said that, there are a couple of fixes within that that would help some of this. And I'll just be brief with, with where we are. One of the first things that would need to do would be for the, um, you could have changed in the bylaws, the recusals, obviously, and state what those are. That's, that's an easy fix as far as the planning commission moving forward with that. The second request we would have as a part of the meaning of the bylaws is to have one of the members, or currently, the, the bylaws prevent full-time city employees from serving on the planning commission. I, I'm going to respectfully request that the planning commission, that be amended and removed. The theory behind that is, we're in the process of attempting to name or employ through the fire department, a fire marshal who also works on planning commission issues. We would like for that person to be seated on the planning commission. I think that gives us some, some room on the planning commission for a person from the city who's familiar with those. Those would be bylaw changes. A couple of the other things that we're going to propose to, to the city council or the board of commissioners is in the 2017, 18 budget, um, that staff and I worked at pretty much all day today. We are including in that $1,600 in a specific line item for training for the planning commission. The theory is that we would mandate four three-hour training sessions per year, one a quarter. And the request to the board of commissioners would be that members of the planning commission be required to attend six hours of training, not only four hours of training. They have to meet two of the four. And we would have that training professionally come in to do those things. So that's one thing we would like to do. The other considerations, um, as you move forward, regardless if you do it through attrition, where you do it through removal, where you do it through, um, term limits, whatever the process would be. And, and that would be a decision of the, of the board of commissioners. But one thing we would like to see as, as a result of whatever that process is, um, some specific requirements as best we could for members of the planning commission. A property attorney would be a suggestion to be on the planning commission. An engineer would be a suggestion to be on the planning commission. A surveyor would be a suggestion to be on the planning commission, and then the fire marshal or that appoint, that appointed person, whoever that may be from the fire department. The last thing that we would request as a part of the budgeting process, and I have included in this in the budgeting process, is a pay increase a month from $100 per month to $200 per month to entice those professionals, as we just talked about. It, it is time consuming. And I think if we're going to move forward and have those people be a part of the planning commission, then we may be able to affect some of that. So from the city's standpoint, we would, we would propose the pay increase, the increased training and the funding, the request of the two changes to the bylaws, and then the appointment of those similar, like or similar positions as you go through the reappointment process, through whatever form or format you get there. So that, that's what I have for you, just as a suggestion to hit some of the, the high notes again. Beyond that, the, the reappointment would certainly be the purview of the, of the board of commissioners.
Okay. And so let me ask you this. Um, I know we had, fall back the discussion of, we are one of two cities that does the appointment of the position, planning commission, by, um, you know, a majority vote. One of two. You did the research on the law, and there was questions, did we really meet the population? I think y'all went through that. But then here's the question. It's only talking about the appointee. The removal would be, if it's not stated, an appointee and removal, then state law would supersede, and basically, um, the mayor then would be the only one because state law says the mayor is the one that selects the, um, planning commission member. So have y'all researched that yet?
Except for the exception of those two places. And those two places specifically say that they will be appointed by the commission, that they serve at the pleasure of the commission, and then replacements will be done by the commission.
And so where does that state law fall in about the, um, the mayor?
The mayor or the mayor designate?
No. I'm talking about the superseding, the ma, the state law superseding.
In, in that context, the, to make sure I understand where we are, in that context, the mayor's position, whoever that is, would be the, they would have their appointing authority for their designate.
I'm not talking about that. I know.
I know, I know. I'm, I'm going there. So, and they would be able to remove that person. I think your question is, if a person is appointed to the planning commission by the city council, or the board of commissioners, I'm sorry, if the, if a person's appointed to the planning commission by the board of commissioners, who would have the sole authority to remove?
The board of commissioners.
Yes, sir. That's where I'm, that's where I'm going. Uh, it, it states that those people serve at the pleasure of the board of commissioners through that appointment. So, uh, in that, the board of commissioners would be able to appoint and remove the members appointed by the, by the board of commissioners, and the mayor will be able to point or remove the designate appointed by the mayor.
Okay. And what did, um, I know you went through some questions with MTEST. What did they say?
Effectively that. And, yes, sir.
Can, can we stop for just, I think at nine o'clock, we're supposed to have just a short recess, and I need a comfort break.
Okay. I'd like to call a recess then. I think everybody's here. And so we were leaving up, you were going to explain what MTEST's recommendation was.
Okay, regarding appointments of planning commission members by the board of commissioners, their their initial assessment was, because they hadn't seen the the act that included Fairview, that those members were appointed by the mayor. Once they reviewed that, they they agree acquiesce that the members of the planning commission, other than the appointment of the mayor and other than the appointment of the board member, would be made and serve at the pleasure of the board of commissioners. I think is your question.
Yeah, now, it does state the mayor makes the nominations and the board votes the person up and down. Is that not correct?
For the planning commission? It may, I believe I've read that for the tree board. I don't know that I read it for the planning commission.
Go ahead.
Mr. Collins, if I might, thank you, Mayor. I I actually was looking at this last night because as part of of our workshop that we're going to do in April, one of the things that I wanted to come in and do was have a comprehensive overview of of all of the boards and commissions and how they're seated, what the composition is, that sort of thing. And I was I was looking at how those those boards are appointed. And Mr. Collins is absolutely right. With respect to the park commission, the tree commission, it does say nominated by the mayor and approved by the majority of the BOC. The planning commission does not have that language. The planning commission just simply says.
Chief legislative body.
Chief legislative body. So it would be the BOC.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Since I brought this onto the agenda, can we can we agree to table this, put it on the agenda for the next meeting? And I don't even know what the agenda items should be. Come to, I don't even know what it would be. But can we table it or we'll be here all night talking about this? And I don't think we're making much progress. And come to a conclusion of what to do to fix, what's the solution? Maybe it's something as simple as if you've not done your required meetings. Does the city notify the planning commission members they have to attend training?
They do, the training, the training's noticed.
Okay, and the planning member, the planning commission members get that notification and they know they're supposed to attend the training. So if that's the case, then maybe something as simple as if you've not done your training, we're giving you this much time to get it done before the next meeting. I mean, I don't know. I don't know what the solution is.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that they actually have, I think this is how this has gone in the past. Sharon says, everybody, I need your four hours turned in to me, any training that you attended by whatever due date it is. I don't know that there's notice that gone, it goes out. Now, maybe is it understood? I don't know. We'd have to, you know, discuss with.
It's my understanding it's both. It's my understanding that when when they have a training and there's a work session and let's say for our purposes, and I think, and there's a, there's a list where we posted video information last year, but it's my understanding that the process goes something like this. If there's a work session, and the work sessions can include training, and in fact, that's what they are, the state is silent on what type of training it must be. It just takes four hours of training effectively. So the way it's gone in the past is they would schedule a work session prior to a regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, and that would be the training session for for that date. And they would record the attendees for training and what that training was. The request that they have of the training, of the planning commission members after that is any additional training that they may have gone to to qualify for the four hours. So there, it's, it's in fact both.
Yeah, well, no, you're right about that. They do get the extra, and they are emailed to come to it. But are you saying, what I understood, and maybe I misunderstood what Commissioner Rainey, is that we notified them that they're supposed to have this training? And I don't know that I've ever seen anything in writing and notifications saying they're supposed to. But we are told yearly at the end when it's due, you know, you've got to have your four hours in. So unless there's something different, I was just making that statement. Go ahead, Vice.
Thank you. I just want to briefly respond to that. And that's, this is one point I tend to disagree, Mayor, with you on is is just that, certainly, I think if someone's been appointed to the planning commission, and they may not know that they have to do four hours initially. But I think once they've become aware and been told, hey, you have four hours of training to do a year, then I don't think it's the city's responsibility necessarily to make sure that that individual that's sitting on that board, that volunteered to sit on that board, gets those four hours done. I think they need to get their four hours done. So to put this back on the city, I just, I don't think that's necessarily fair. I understand what you're saying, but, you know, I, as an attorney, we have 15 hours we have to do a year. I know that, I knew that when I became an attorney, and it's not anybody's responsibility other than mine to go get my 15 hours of training, or CLE in my case. So I just want to make that point.
Yeah, and I actually agree with you. But what I'm saying is I'm going back to the initial training. When they come on the board, what have we given them, what have we done? I I understand that, you know, I just don't know that that we have properly, that we can sit here blindly and go, oh, we did everything we're supposed to. I've been here long enough to know, I served on the planning commission. I'm not sure every year we've done exactly. Now, if we're just talking about this year, well, okay. I'm sure Mr. Hall or Mr. Collins can explain, you know, it sounds like y'all did what you're supposed to. I'm just saying the lack of a training overall, which I think Mr. Collins stated earlier that, you know, they were actually putting some provisions in the budget and going to make some requests, knowing that it's a problem that needs to be addressed.
And let me add one other, one other point of discussion, and then I'm done. One thing we discussed at our planning committee meeting two days ago, going forward, not as a remedy in past, going forward, is when you advertise for the position of planning commission member and you take those applications, that application will include the six, not four, but six hours of required training that must be attended as a part of member of the planning commission, and they must attain those, must attend those six hours as a part of the city provided training. We would provide a total of 12 hours for three-hour blocks. As a part of the application process, they would agree to attend a minimum of two of the four for six hours, if that makes sense. So when they get the application, they fill it out. They know by submission of the application that they must attend six hours of the city-provided 12-hour training for the year. The question can come up in the, about the the knowledge, and we had that conversation too, about did they know? And the general discussion amongst staff was, once they were noticed at the end of the first year, that they had to have the 12, the four hours training, then they effectively were noticed the next year that they had to have, if that makes sense.
It does.
So we're trying to address it on going forward, but to answer the the retroactive question of that would be the answer to that question.
Well, and to respect to what Commissioner Rainey said about table on it, I'm not so sure we're going to be, next meeting, be ready any different unless we discuss what we want it to look like and what the matrix is. I think we're going to come back next meeting and, you know, just discuss the same things. I think the appropriate action is some kind of workshop with the planning commission and seeing what they sees the problems are, what they envision it to look like, and include them in this process. And then we can come and together have an outline and bring it front of the board and make real change that would make a difference for the future of Fairview. So I make a motion that we schedule a workshop with the planning commission to discuss.
Point of order. If a motion or matter's already been tabled or requested to be tabled, what's the next step to take with that?
If there was, if there'd been a motion to table in a second, then you would have that. At this point, you're you're just general discussion. So you, anyone could be, any offer.
Just want to clarify and make sure we didn't have two motions going.
Can I make the motion to table now?
Well, was there original motion? How can you table? It's discussion. I don't think there was original motion.
The only provision from a motion standpoint would be, obviously, the mayor is the chair of the board, so they could, they could discontinue discussion of point of offering a motion to to reschedule rather than than table wouldn't be in order. Offer a motion to add this to the agenda for the next meeting, or whatever the case would be, or simple request.
I think I made that request, and I made that request added to the agenda next month, next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, there's no second, so so if you table it.
But as I understand, there's no motion or request to table. There's a request by Commissioner Rainey to add this as an agenda item at the next meeting. So my understanding is that would be an appropriate request. I don't think there's a provision to deny the request.
Did you say appropriate or inappropriate?
Would be appropriate.
Okay.
To make the request. So I understand that's your request is to have it discussed at the next meeting.
Correct.
I understand it's the mayor's request that a joint work session be held, and that also would be an appropriate request if you were to to offer a motion or discuss scheduling that.
Which I did offer a motion. There's no motion put on the table. So I'm first to offer a motion, which I can. And now we got a first and a second, so we can have a discussion. Correct?
I think that my motion to put it on next meeting agenda was first.
Well, no, you said table it.
Let me, let me be clear. Let me be clear. You, you don't have to move to table because there's no motion in a second to be tabled. There's no action. It's up for discussion.
Right.
Ms. Rainey's request was to have it added for further discussion at the next board of commissioners' meeting, which is appropriate, and we would add that to the agenda. That would be the end of her point of discussion. Your motion and Commissioner Crutcher's second to entertain a work session joint of the planning commission and the board of commissioners is now on the floor and would be appropriate. So you would just simply need to state the date and time.
Okay, so if we, we have a first and a second, any discussion?
If I may, there was discussion, it seems like, at the last planning commission meeting about doing a joint workshop before the next planning commission meeting. Or maybe I'm thinking of something else. But I know there, I've read that somewhere or saw that somewhere that we had already talked about doing a joint workshop.
Mr. Crutcher, which which last meeting are you referring to? The one where we did have quorum?
No, 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 no.
Or the one before that?
The one before that.
That was a special called meeting, so.
Let me be clear what I'm talking about, because there's some confusion. I'm talking about at the last actual planning commission meeting. I'm not talking about anything that was rescheduled or what happened at that rescheduled meeting that there wasn't a quorum. I'm talking about at that meeting. Regardless, the point is this, whether there was or wasn't discussion about a workshop. The question is, is can we do this before the next, either before or after the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting? That way, it would be accomplished before the item comes back up on the agenda per your request, Commissioner Rainey. That's my question. Can we do this? And that would be what, next Tuesday?
Correct.
That would be next Tuesday.
Mr. Mr. Hall, did you have a comment?
That's right. I was wrong. I, I'm forgetting that the seventh is actually the first Tuesday, so be the second Tuesday, the 14th. But that would still be before our regularly scheduled meeting on the 16th. So it would still accomplish.
So and you, do you want to do that at 6:00 o'clock or?
I would prefer, based on the nature of the the conversation that we're going to have, to do it after. So that we're not, again, I don't necessarily want to be here all night, and I know no one else does, but I don't want us to be constrained by one hour necessarily.
If I may offer one, the planning commission meeting for March 14 is going to be a lengthy meeting. I can let you know that now. I'm just advising you of the time. I know that meeting starts at 7:00 PM and that's going to go for a little while. So if that helps or hurts in the decision, well, obviously, staff will do as you prefer. But I know the 14th itself is going to be a long night planning commission work wise, so.
I'm certainly not married to that date. I mean, we can pick another day. My thought was is just they'll already be here, and there's nine of them. If the five of us could get here, it would be just, from a scheduling standpoint, it just makes more sense. But if it's a lengthy meeting and we're going to be here till 11:00 o'clock, then by all means, let's pick another date. What I do think it needs to, I do think it needs to happen, if we're going to have this, before the next BOC meeting, since it's back on the agenda. Otherwise, I agree with the mayor, I don't know what we're going to accomplish. We're going to have the same conversation. I mean, I think we're, we're still limited to some extent by the things that we've talked about in terms of the options. So, I mean, I don't know what else we can, I don't know what else we're going to glean from having a, having further conversation.
My suggestion, work session joint would either be week from tonight on the night or 5:00 PM on the 14th. If your, if your effort is to have that before that.
Yeah, I was thinking, you know, 5:30 maybe on the 14th. That gives at least an hour that can have a little break. Or I'm fine with the city manager's recommendation too. I don't want to make their night longer, but I do know it'll be hard to get, you know, people there if they're not always scheduled.
Since you know the planning commission is going to be here on the 14th, and that's a large number, if you're going to pick the two, if you did it before the 7:00 PM meeting, you'd be okay. If you're going to do it after the 7:00 PM meeting, it'd be a late start. So not to make your motion, but if you're going to do that, I would do 5:00 or 5:30 on the 14th.
Well, let me say that there's no way I can be here at 5:00, and 5:30 will be iffy.
Okay. Can we, can we, can we do 7:00, 7:00 PM on the 9th? Is that a date available for everyone?
Let me look. I'm good with that.
I'm available.
So I'll make a motion that we, is there a motion pending? Do I need to do something different?
There's a motion in a second, other than the time, time and date.
Okay.
So if the mayor states the time and date, that'd be the motion.
Okay, that we'll have the meeting on the 9th, which is a Thursday, at 7:00 PM. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Do you have the proper count, or do we need to roll call that? Did you get? Okay. Okay, item F, discuss and take action of resolution 01-17.
A resolution repealing resolution number 04-16, an enactment of a resolution requesting the state of Tennessee amend Tennessee code annotated sections 6-20-101 and 6-20-201, both of which are charter provisions of the city of Fairview, Tennessee.
Okay.
Yes, Mayor, members of the commission, I'll explain to you where we are. This, resolution 416 would have, would have done what we have discussed before, which would have been amend the state code, section 620-101 and 622-101 specifically relating to the items that were discussed as far as changing the votes, I mean, changes the election and the election cycle for certain members of the board of commissioners. In working on that and trying to to make sure we get this correct, and in working with MTEST to try and make sure we chose the correct path to do this, the discussions with MTEST have been that it would be an easier process to go through the process of a private act or a local act rather than attempt to amend various sections of the state code that would apply statewide and have the necessity for that to be done statewide. So their assessment is that it would be an easier task to do a private act rather than amend the the state statutes that I just mentioned. Within that, there have been some additions to that, and I sent an email out that included some of these, but I'll let you know what our discussions are, just so you'll know what we're going to try and have drafted and taken to the legislature as a private act unless they tell us we can't, we can't do it. And we think the calendar is still our friend to get this done in this legislative session if we can move fairly quickly. The first thing that was discussed was the changing of the elective seats to go from three members of the board of commissioners, and then the next election, one commissioner and the mayor, to two members of the board of commissioners, and then the next election will be two members of the board and the mayor, as I understand that. What we're, what we've discussed to be drawn is effectively this, and I'll be very brief. In the 2018, the 2018 election would be for a mayor and one commissioner, or both the four-year terms with no changes as we have. The 2020 election would be for three commission seats. The two highest vote getters would serve on four-year terms. The third highest vote getter would serve on a two-year term. In 2022, or the 2022 election, would be for one mayor and two commission seats, and that would get you in the cycle that you need. 2022 would be one mayor, two commissioners. 2024 would be two commissioners. 2026 would be a mayor and two commissioners, and so on. So that's what we've asked assistance to draft, and I think that accomplishes the goal that we were looking to accomplish originally. The second item that was discussed, or had been discussed, was a resign to run provision. The way that it currently works is if you have, on the cycle where you have the mayor and commission, or commissioners as we move forward, in that instance, the commissioners' four-year term would be up along with the two-year term, I mean, the four-year term of the mayor. So if I am a commissioner, Commissioner Collins, and I choose to run for mayor, and I state that, then I've effectively vacated the opportunity to run for commissioner. I can't run for both seats. Being it's the end of my term, I'm going to have to pick and choose. The resign to run provision is designed for a midterm commissioner desiring to run for mayor, if that makes sense. Where if I've been in my seat two years and I want to run for mayor, I could announce that I'm running for mayor, and I would effectively vacate my commission seat at the end of that term. In other words, I run for mayor, I win, I'm still on the Board of Commissioners until the time that I'm sworn in for mayor. If I run for mayor and I lose, I vacate my seat at the time the mayor's sworn in, regardless of who the mayor is, win or lose, would be the resign to run provision, if that makes sense. I give up that seat. The opportunity to do one costs me the opportunity to do the other. So that's the second provision that we talked about on that resign to run, and that's how we had it drawn and discussed. The next item that we talked about was imposing term limits for the mayor and commission. If this goes through, this would not apply to currently seated board members or mayor. Your current term would not be included in that. It would be beginning with the next elected term. So the term limits would be that you could be seated for two terms as commissioner if you chose not to, or at that point, you can't run commissioner for a third concurrent term, full term. If you were appointed originally to an unexpired term, then in fact, you could fill the unexpired term and then run twice on concurrent full terms, if that makes sense. The, a commissioner could then choose to run for mayor, or if it's a two-term mayor, they could choose to run for commission, but you could not hold the same seat for longer than two consecutive full terms, if that makes sense, as far as the term limits. That's how they were explained, and that's what we've asked for assistance to be drawn. And then the last part of this is service limits or concurrent, holding concurrent elective offices. In other words, I'm on the city council, I'm on the Board of Commissioners, and during my term as Board of Commissioners, I run for the county commission. If I run for county commission and win, I would have to vacate my city commission seat at the time I was sworn into the county commission seat. I would not be able to serve concurrent elective terms. That is a rough overview of the four areas that have been discussed. I'll be glad to hit those highlights if you need to, but it kind of grew from what was discussed early on until include the things, and we just want to make sure we get it right and include those.
What about, I mean, I know this is not exactly what we wrote, but you just brought up a point, and it would be something I would like you to, you know, look in, and you may be able to answer it now, I don't know, but, you know, say like, I gave up my seat to run for another seat, then the vice mayor would become mayor to finish out the term? Or how would that work? Or would they have to appoint? I'm not going anywhere, don't worry about it, but it just steered a question when you were saying if somebody gave up, they were going to run for a county commission, they would have to give up their seat to run for other stuff? Is that...
You wouldn't have to give, if you're running concurrently...
It's fine.
I'm on the city council, and I run for this thing, and I lose, I keep my seat. The resign to run would not apply to another seat. But in that, in this, for your discussion, if I run for county commission and I'm a city council member, and I win, then the night I'm sworn in as county commission member would be the day I vacated my seat on the city Board of Commissioners.
Right.
The reappointment for a seated commission member is a vote of the Board of Commissioners for the replacement. Now, you could, and so in that instance, you could handle that that way. To complicate the matter a little bit, if Commissioner Collins is on the city council midterm and I run, and keep in mind, you have one mayor seat and two commission seat at that election. So I choose to run for mayor, there were three, there were two commission seats, now there are going to be three commission seats. In that instance, you drafted in such a way similarly to the way we drafted the first issue, which is going from three and one to two and two. The way you would likely draft that is you could do it two ways. You could either have the board fill the unexpired term of the commissioner who vacated, or you could have it drawn where in that election, the top two vote getters for the Board of Commissioners get four-year seats, and the third vote getter get the two-year seat, if that makes sense.
Go ahead, Vice.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to tell you a little bit of my thought process behind the resign to run, and Mr. Collins has done a good job with what he's drafted so far, but something that's been talked about for a long time. And the reason behind it is, is I think that the Board of Commissioners should, absent death of one of the commissioners or resignation of one of the commissioners, I don't think the Board of Commissioners should be in a position to appoint another member to the Board of Commissioners versus someone being popularly elected. So I think the more we can limit that, and you could run into that to a situation where you have a midterm commissioner running for mayor, if they won that seat and they become the mayor, then there's a seat that then would have to be appointed by the board. And politically, I just don't think that's the right thing to do. I think we should leave it to the people and let the people make the decision. So that was the thought process behind that, so just so you know.
I just complicated it because of what you said. I was just curious. Okay.
And to complicate it more, not to, I don't mean to interrupt, but not to complicate it more, at some point, as a city goes, and I'm not suggesting we do this tonight, or at the next meeting, or two years from now, but at some point, as a city grows, there may have to be some discussion as how you handle districts versus at-large versus those things, and then how you handle how many seats at one time, because that, today, that's not an issue. I can see 10 years from now that comes up, so, but for the purposes of what we have tonight, certainly, the discussions that we just had, we want to have drawn in such a way that affects what you want it to affect in the simplest manner possible. So we're hoping that we get that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Do we get our motion covered? Who's, sorry. Okay, so anybody want to put a motion?
I don't think there's a reason.
Not a reason? Okay, well, that's 20 deal, so, okay. City manager?
Yes, Mayor, members of the commission, I have only about 30 minutes worth of information. I'm kidding. Three. First off, last Monday, last Monday morning specifically, our fire department and police responded to what could have been a very difficult call, on a fire call over at the Legacy Apartments, just off Highway 100. I happened to be at work, we were closed that day, I was here that morning. Fire trucks leave, the police trucks leave, I look out the window, you can see the smoke. I get there about the same time our fire trucks get there, police officers get there. And I can tell you, I've been here for a pretty short time, but you would have been wholly impressed with the actions of our police department and fire department on that issue. The fire department arrived in a situation that could have been very difficult very quickly, and to watch them get out and do what they did in the manner that they did would have made anyone in this community proud. It was very impressive to see, and I know most of our employees don't get enough thanks, but I can tell you, that situation could have been very bad very quickly, and they did an exceptional job. It was a very good day for the city of Fairview, not necessarily the residents, but how we responded. It was, I was glad to be a part of that, just as an observer and a part of the city, so I just want to thank them for the work that they did on that. Secondly, the same thank you to all of our partners, police department, fire department, Williamson County Rescue EMS, Sheriff's Department, State Troopers, for their help with the Marshall Blackburn Town Hall that we had last week. There was a lot of coordination that went into that, there was a lot of effort that went into that. I know Brandy stayed on the phone and on emails for what seemed like 24 hours a day leading up to that. To get to that day and see that go the way that it did with those partners was just exceptional. And I've shared some of the emails that I got and the responses that we got from that, but our hope at the end was that the city of Fairview be seen favorably in that event, and it's my belief that we absolutely were through that process. So just a thank you to everyone who was involved in that. The police department, Chief Humphries has been here for several weeks now. During the interview process, each of you had an opportunity to go down and look at the police department and the conditions of the police department working and otherwise. He's done a really good job at trying to rebranding that police department, literally from the ground up, from the building. If you get an opportunity in the next few weeks, stop by, get with him, take a look through, and just look at the difference physically in the building and some of the work, and I think it's indicative of the work we'll do going out of that. We had an issue where, a couple of days ago, we had some media here asking some questions. Chief Humphries couldn't speak to the media because he was dressed in paint clothes, and he's literally downstairs painting the walls and doing those things that need to be done to make the building different. I would much rather him been on TV than me be on TV, but given the fact of what was going on in there, we certainly appreciate that. And if you walk through the building, I think you'll be able to see, the changes in the police department are literally from the ground and walls up, internally moving out. We're certainly appreciative of that. And the last thing I have for you is the budget schedule's already begun. We mentioned some of that tonight. The staff and I spent all day going over the budget, just as a process we discussed, which is every department go down every line item, this was a first of several. We need to have the budget to you by May 15. We expect to have the budget to you at least two weeks early. I expect to deliver it to you on April 29. It would then be your budget to work with, but I'll let you know that we're a little ahead of schedule on budget, and just kind of thank our staff. The changes that we're working through are pretty substantial from a budgeting process, and everyone has been great to work with. So we'll get that out to you, but just kind of a thank you to the staff and all the work that goes on behind the scenes that you just don't get to see. So that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you. City attorney?
Mayor, I have nothing further at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Rainey?
Done, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Lucas?
Yeah, a couple of quick things. I said earlier I was sick. I got a lot of messages and thoughts and prayers from a lot of people in the city. I'm doing better. Short version is I had a blood pressure problem, and it could have went bad really quick. If you ever need medical help here in Fairview, I will tell you that Fast Pace did a great job with me. I'm very hard-headed and did not want to go to the hospital, but they convinced me otherwise, so thanks for all those that reached out to me during all that. To kind of springboard off of what the city manager said, the town hall, if you were around here at all and you saw what went on, city of Fairview did a great job that day, whether you agreed with what was going on outside or whether you didn't, we did a really good job as a city, being welcoming and just basically being who we are as a community, and I was pretty proud about that moment. Some of you saw the police officer, and Chief, I don't remember his name, that we were talking about before the meeting. Okay. You saw him get into a confrontation with a car, kind of got drugged under the car. He's doing well, back at work. I'm glad to hear that, glad he's okay. And also want to wish my wife a happy birthday. She's at home while I'm here, so I guess I'll have to get her something real special since I missed it. But anyway, that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Burks?
Some of the discussions we're going to have, you know, they're going to be a little uncomfortable at times, and I appreciate the fact that we can have those and be professional, and everybody try to get their views across. And Mayor, I apologize, but it seemed like I was cutting you off. Unfortunately, Mr. Crutcher kind of blocked you in these horrible lights that are blinding, which...
Right off my head?
It doesn't help, Commissioner Crutcher, but they're very bad, and I've asked that we maybe fix this. But I'm glad we're able to have these discussions, and everybody be respectful about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Real quickly, I know we're here late. I went to the presentation at the high school on Tuesday for the Megatronics program. Dr. Oyer put that on, and of course, there are several partnerships in that. I think the Williamson Chamber and the Columbia State Community College is part of that. If you don't know much about that program, I know the mayor has talked about it before, but I just wanted to give it a little bit of a plug tonight. It is an amazing program that's been developed for our high school, with the initiative of all those individuals I just named, including Dr. Oyer, who sort of spearheaded that. The passion with which the panel of kids, or I shouldn't say kids, young men and women talked about that program was unbelievable, and it was a really cool thing to see. And just to see the things that they're doing in that class is a cool thing to see. If you haven't had a chance to go by and see it, you need to go by and see it. Ask Dr. Oyer, and I'm sure they'll be happy to accommodate you. We have kids, and I think there's no other program like this in the state, my understanding, that would put high school students on a path to, when they walk across the stage to get their diploma, they can also get a two-year associate's degree. That's pretty amazing, and we have that right here in Fairview. Like everything else, there's funding issues with that program. It's something that certainly needs to be on our radar in the future, in my opinion. I'm going to have, I'm going to see if Dr. Oyer would be willing to come and give the same presentation to this board that she gave to the school, but we need to engage in dialogue with Dr. Oyer in any way that we can, try to continue to support that program, and hopefully, this will just be the beginning of that type of program, and there'll be more to come, where these high school students can earn college credit, or actually, a college degree, and then go out into the workforce. I mean, certainly, as Fairview continues to grow, manufacturing is going to be a part of that, and if we have kids, again, I'm using kids, young men and women, that can come out of high school and go right into those jobs and be a part of the workforce locally, that's huge to our future, so just wanted to give that program a plug.
Thank you. Yes, that was a great event. I saw pictures, and I was glad you were able to go to that. Definitely, a lot of people have come involved to make this happen, and I've heard that people are paying a lot of attention to it and looking at trying to start the same programs in their schools. So very proud of Fairview High School and all the schools here in Fairview. Just had a couple of things I was going to bring up. I did want to note, I appreciate your, Commissioner Burks, your recognition of, you know, not meaning to cut off. I just watched some meetings, and I noticed that we're not really practicing Robert Charles Order, and that we're engaging in conversations, and when we get in heated subjects, it's really important that the chair does have control. And we've been real relaxed because it's a new board, and, you know, just getting our way, and I haven't really hammered on it because I'm an anxious person, I like to get what I'm saying out as quick as possible. But I do think if we're going through and we're looking at bylaws and we're going to do procedures right, there's things that we can do to make the meetings run smoother and not be having, at some point, it seems to be conversation. So I was trying to acknowledge that, and then just, there's, you know, just, I have to brush up on Robert Charles Order every once in a while because, and some of it's kind of absurd to me, you know? I know it's a recommendation, it's a guideline, but we can suspend Robert Charles Order during a meeting if there's some reason, it's been done before, but it is this recognized board's guidelines of what to go by, so just wanted to make that suggestion. I'm not one of these, I want all the control. I just think that when we do get into the deep discussions, and I think we've been lucky in the last couple of meetings, or since the new board, that we really haven't had a need, but, you know, we are engaging now back and forth and bringing forth ideas, so I just would like to make that recommendation, because I want the meetings to run as smoothly as possible, and I'm sure y'all do too. I guess, I did want to say, happy birthday to Michelle, and then I did want to acknowledge the city... And then I did want to acknowledge the city, I know other commissioners and Mr. Collins did, but I was very proud of Fairview with the Marsha Blackburn event. I mean, the city did an excellent job, and, you know, Ms. Johnson, I mean, boy, she didn't know when our name went on something that she would, it would be, but it also affected Mr. Collins daily. But I did want to mention to Chief Humphries, I had been in contact with Marsha's office and, you know, actually, it was with other mayors, and they said, oh, you need to contact THP, or you need to do this, giving suggestions. It was that week before, because we were talking about the event and how much attention it was receiving. And so I called Chief Humphries, and boy, he already had it. I mean, he was like, this is what we're doing, blah, 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 blah. And I don't know where that came from, if it was direction of Scott, or if it's all of his ideal, but.
Yes, I told him to do all of it.
You did? Oh, okay, we'll take all that. But either way.
I had no clue.
It was so impressive, and just to know it was done, and just everything that could have been thought of was crossed, and anytime I thought of something, it seemed to be covered. So very impressed with city staff, and I do think we put a great show in, and we learned a lot. So, and then just, I guess that'll be it for tonight. Thank you, though. Appreciate what y'all do.
I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Okay. Got a first and second, we're adjourned.